I'm live streaming, just so you know. John, I'm live streaming, just so you know.
It was telling me the host was not allowing people to unmute themselves.
Well, now you are a co-host, you may unmute yourself at will.
All right, I see Nan is on. Did you all coordinate, collaborate?
Um, I did not get, it would not allow me to access her slides, so I've made her a co-host as well, so that she can share her slides.
All right. I do love a seven o'clock meeting.
I know you do.
Here's a, you can't make this up. I had a NASDAQ meeting with Tony Bent, one of their representatives, he used to be superintendent in Shrewsbury. And he said, is Susan McGuinness working with you in Marblehead? And I said, oh, no. She was the other finalist in the search. Well, I read something in our local paper that she was happy to be able to support the work that you're doing there. And I said, well, that's very odd. I've not seen or heard from her, but.
All right, I am going to admit people.
Very early.
I can wait. Emily, we, we are live streaming, just so you know, right now, so.
Does anyone know how you change your, like, when you turn your camera off and there's something? Right now, it's just a big orange J, and I think it's obnoxious, and I've seen people that have really nice things as they're.
I don't know. Emily and David have different pictures on theirs. I don't know how, I think. That's right, I forgot that they can't unmute themselves.
I can do, I can do, try and do.
All right, I'm giving you guys co-host abilities, so that you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, so you can, you can go, you can go into settings and pick, you know, pick a picture, or you can do a virtual setting, or. You know, it's when, when you get that first, there's that first login that says you're in a Zoom meeting. And usually, that, that's where, that's where the settings are.
Hi, Nan.
Nan, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Nan, good evening.
I love that picture behind you. Is that Dartmouth?
You win. Very good, Nan. Absolutely, that is a black and white from 1961.
Love it, love it.
Of the Dartmouth green, exactly, with Baker Library.
Nice.
Was a Christmas gift that I had matted.
Nice. What, did you graduate, undergraduate?
Yeah, I'm class of eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven, okay, great.
Yep.
John, I figured it out. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
You go to Settings under the Zoom US. Uh, no, I made, uh, References, Preferences. Wait, I just, in Profile, do you see that?
I don't.
Okay, so where it says Zoom, oh, but I'm on a Mac, it might look different. Zoom, Preferences, and then it's under your profile.
Okay. I don't know if I can do it while I'm in, or were you?
No, because I could, yeah. Or I can, anyway.
I'm gonna figure this out.
So Nan, I'm not sure if you heard me say, I couldn't open your slides, so by co-host abilities, you can share your screen when, when you're ready and, and bring them right up.
Perfect. And it, you know, depending on how we're doing on time, I, you know, I may or I may not.
Okay, sounds good.
So let's see if I did this correctly.
Actually, Sarah, since it's just us, can I just practice sharing the screen to make sure it's working?
Sure, yes, we are live streaming right now, but. You want to share your screen?
How's that? Yep, perfect.
Fourteen people in the waiting room is much different than six hundred and thirty-eight.
Yes.
Sarah, do you want me to help, help let people in?
Every, all of us can do it. Sarah Fox, I gave you co-host abilities too, so that we can all unmute ourselves then.
Okay, do you ever hit Admit All, or is that bad news?
No, I hit Admit All all the time.
Okay, all right.
James, you should be allowed to record. And we are also live streaming this at this point, too.
Where is it livestreamed, Sarah?
It's, it's on a YouTube page that I set up through my Marblehead Schools account. So I need to do a little bit more work on it, on how to get it so that it's more accessible.
Does it live there? I'm sorry, I'm the worst at technology, like, it's embarrassing. Does it live there? Like, can people go back later on and watch it not live?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And then the one from last time is also embedded onto the Back Together MHD site.
Oh, that's wonderful, okay.
Yeah. And so we can try to do that with this one, too, if it ends up making sense. And I think, you know, the, the, our website discussion tonight, that, that also would be a good place to try to incorporate it in.
Okay.
Megan, maybe you could play some YouTube music in the background for, while we're waiting?
Of course. Next time, I'm just gonna have Bono play personally.
I swear, there's been a Bono reference every single meeting since March.
That's why I keep it up.
It lightens the mood. Give it another minute or so before calling to order. Got some people trickling in. Okay, I will go ahead and call us to order at seven oh three PM. Welcome, everyone. If anyone wants to make public comment, please raise your hand, use the Raise Hand function, and I will call on you. So I'll give people a moment to do that.
Sarah, I wonder if we should just explain to people how to do that, because I, I don't know if everybody's as well-versed at Zoom.
Good, good call. So if you go over to your, if you, if you go over to your Participants bar, if you push Participants at the bottom of your screen, and then you hover over, I believe it's, if you hover over Yourself, there should be an option to raise your hand. If, if anybody needs to correct me, go ahead, because I'm usually the host on these, and so it's a little different.
So at the bottom of the Participants windows, where I've always seen the Raise Hand, but it may be different on different devices.
Okay. So currently, I don't see anybody's hand raised. Does anybody want to make public comment this evening? Raise their hand if so.
Sarah, for some reason, it's not on mine anymore tonight.
Oh, interesting.
It's because, it's because you're the co-host, Sarah.
Oh, yeah.
Co-hosts don't have the Raise Hand function.
All right, well, I don't see anybody's hand raised, so we will move forward. So John, that brings us to the Superintendent's report and the reentry update. They will let you take it away.
Sure, thank you. I feel like we could have a school committee meeting every night, because there is new updates and new information coming in. I think yesterday, I referred to it as a tsunami of information, because the governor made the announcement about vaccinations, or flu shots, rather, as a requirement for all students in public schools. So there was a lot of interest generated from that. And then athletics updates on fall seasons of play, and what sports would be offered, and how, so I won't steal Greg's thunder. We're gonna have each of the committee chairs do a brief presentation to the committee this evening. But lots of information, some updated information forthcoming on remote learning and parameters for that. I have said a lot that we are in a classic chicken or egg situation right now. And I so appreciate that parents desperately want to know more specifics and more details of information on if they choose fully remote, or they choose the hybrid plan. I have heard the rumblings out there that people are going to maybe indicate one choice, and then jump and switch to another. And I would just ask that you are very honest in your choice. We, unlike other school districts, are not holding families to that choice for the year. Some districts are saying what you decide now in August will be your learning modality for the year. We are making choice points in the quarter or the trimester for families that may pick fully remote, and then feel better about sending their children back after having seen how the hybrid works, or vice versa. People might start out in the hybrid and not feel comfortable, or things will change, so they want to make that transition. So I would just ask our families to take the information that we're able to provide now, back to my chicken and egg scenario. We're in that place where it's hard for us to get into too deep on the specifics when we don't know the numbers. And so right now, we have about half our families who have responded to the surveys, the principal, or to the survey. The principals did their listening sessions on Tuesday, and I continue to be surprised, and I don't know why, but hundreds of families took advantage of the opportunity to participate in those listening sessions. And those were masterfully guided by building principles, you know, facilitating questions that, honestly, some of which we don't yet have the answers to. But I feel good about the opportunity that we provided families to ask questions, to seek clarifications. And I know they worked this morning on kind of a master FAQ, and each principal sent something out to families, synthesizing all of the information from their listening sessions. So that is also posted with the recordings of the listening sessions on the BackTogetherMHD.com website. The survey continues. Lot of questions about safety, and what we mean by that in the governor's kind of stoplight highlighting system of green areas and yellow areas and red areas. There was a superintendent today that posted that his community in a twenty-four hour period, or in a day and a half, went from being a yellow to a red to a yellow to a white, based on information. And their Public Board of Health was saying something that was different than what was posted on the state site. And so I know that that can be a source of frustration for people to look and say, look at the, look at the numbers in Marblehead, John, you're missing it. We could go back. And for me, it is not that we could go back, is it how we go back safely? And I have tried to make that clear, that we want to spend those three weeks educating students and families for how to be in schools and classrooms that will look and operate nothing like they left in March. What we understood school to be is nothing like it will be in September. And I think having four hundred students in the first cohort show up at Marblehead High School on September fourteenth would be a recipe for disaster. So I'm hoping that starting in remote learning, we get remote learning right, I'm asking teachers to be in their classrooms, and to be doing remote learning for those three weeks. And then we will transition to the hybrid model for students in grades three to twelve on October fifth. I was able to get some of our youngest learners back in early, and that updated timeline is on the Back Together MHD website as well. So we're able to bring our kindergarteners, our first graders, and our second graders back earlier. I heard that loudly and clearly from you and through the listening sessions, and so it is kind of a nice update that we're able to do that. Some good news, we're gonna have Marblehead masks, which will fit very nicely into what was the front page story in the paper today about normalizing mask wearing. And since that will be a major part of safely being in school for all of our students, pre-K to twelve, wearing a mask along with the social distancing and the hand washing and other safety measures. But we have obtained designer masks for all of our students, and that will be part of the three-week period as well, when students are coming in, meeting their teacher, building relationships, picking up materials for the remote learning phase, that we will give them these masks. The backpack drive, again, such a celebration of this community, we set a goal of if we were able to raise two thousand dollars, an anonymous donor would donate an additional thousand dollars, and like that, we raised the two thousand dollars. So we have met that goal, and over a hundred Marblehead students will benefit from this back-to-school backpack drive. School calendar is, I think, fairly set at this point. I have been working with it and doing options and counting days and circling dates, and it involves some bit of math, which I am not particularly good at, so I've done it about seventeen times now. I think we have finally landed, day one of school is September fourteenth, that was the easy one. What the last day of school, after a bit, will be June fourteenth, and I picked that because it's my birthday. It will be a celebration across the district, that the last day of school is also my birthday. And then we will be publishing for families those quarter and trimester dates, which we have identified, will be transition points, that if you want to go from fully remote to the hybrid, or vice versa. So we will be getting those out to families as well. What I published in this memo, I think, has moved slightly. So I will update those dates and get them to the committee, as I understand, calendar is a topic of great interest here. So I want to make sure I get that right. Communication campaign, we have really, and by we, I mean Kate Conson has really done an amazing job with communications. Some of the stuff that we are able to do and produce, and the metrics that we're able to follow, is, is really outstanding. And so you see just some data points, fifty-three tweets, thousands and thousands of views, and that's getting the information out there. And I attended a Communications Workshop, Professional Development, about five years ago, and they said, if you're not telling your district's story, somebody else is. And I feel very good about what we have been able to do in the midst of all this reopening stuff, that we've been able to get it out there and communicate clearly. And even when people don't agree or are not pleased by the information that we're sharing, I get email after email that appreciate the transparency and the availability of information for families. Some information on the fireside chats, Kate shared something interesting in the communications meeting this morning, that nearly eighty percent of the people who watch my weekly updates, watch it from beginning to end. And she said, in the corporate communications world, CEOs would be astounded by a data point like that, that people actually watched or engaged something that was put out, eighty percent of people from start to finish. So I'm pleased by the work that we're doing in communications. I would like to give opportunity for the reopening committees to share with you the work that they've been doing this summer, because it's so specific and so nuanced. And so for me, as the superintendent, to try and synthesize nine subcommittees and what they have done, literally putting in hundreds of hours of work. But I would open it up to questions, if you want to ask me questions, or you want me to move into the subcommittee reports, put that out there.
Megan?
Yeah, I don't have a question, but John, I just really want to thank you for going back and having another look at the early learners. I just, I really appreciate that, and I think where you've come out is a really great solution. So I think one thing that you mentioned in your update is the piece about using time during those. one thing that you mentioned in your update is the piece about using time during those three weeks of remote learning to really help train students and probably parents too. And I think that's a really important component to that, that I, you know, I think it was great for you to clarify because to be honest, that was something that um, you know, I'd mentioned to you, like, I wasn't, I wasn't a hundred percent sure um how that was happening. So I think that's, that was a great clarification. Thank you. And can't wait for the birthday party in June. It's gonna be great.
Megan, I want to dovetail on that because that's something I'm getting a number of emails. And I know that Assistant Superintendent Murphy is getting them as well. Parents are desperate for how they can best support their learners at home. And I know, I'm not sure that schools have done a great job of that, other than saying, okay, these will be remote learning days at home. So I think that we'll be collaborating in some subcommittees about doing parent outreach or perhaps videos for how to keep your student focused and engaged while in remote learning. Because we've spent so much time working with teachers and students, but we're asking parents to be educational facilitators at home, but not giving them any sort of training or tools or skill, skill development work in that. So that's something that will be coming down as well.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. Sarah, do you wanna, did you have something?
Yeah, I took a few notes in when you were talking. But just to to fill up on what you just said, I think that, you know, we talk about the professional development, but if there's a parent development night, I think that would be wonderful. Um, and and I know that that's something that's, you know, being talked about in in the works, but I think that that will really be welcome in the community. So a few notes I took when you were, when you were presenting things. Um, I just want to clarify. So it's really obvious that you can't go from remote to hybrid except at the quarters or trimesters. But if someone is in a hybrid situation and just feeling, you know, their child's not in barking unsafe behaviors, some, there's a new dynamic in the household that creates something. Can you go from hybrid to remote? Is it a one-way street or no, not at all?
Yeah, I think that's a fair question, Sarah. And I think we're going to have to be very contextual with those decisions and determine it on a case-by-case basis. If somebody's family had a med- uh medical tragedy or a significant event and they felt very unsafe sending their child back to school, um, I wouldn't want to be in the position of saying, no, it's not a change point for you. But I wouldn't want to broadly say, yes, the, it's a one-way street for one, but not for the other.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, 'cause I, I, I think that's a really good point that, um, you know, obviously there are exceptions to every rule, but this is, this is a rule in that honesty is definitely in these surveys, gonna set us all up for the best success. Um, and then the, oh, I, one question, you're talking about the, the speaking in the cla- uh teaching from the classroom. Um, one thought is for the teacher that is the dedicated remote teacher, um, and you don't have to answer this right now. It's just, I'm thinking as I heard you say it, um, it, would that behoove us to have that person teach from home for a few reasons? It frees up a classroom, which gives us more space, um, since that person will never, ever have students in that room. Um, also, it, you know, the reason for teaching remote may be a reason they can't be in the building. But um also just, you know, for those kids that are seeing a teacher in the hybrid mode, you want to see them in their classroom, I understand that. But um, for the kids that are never entering a classroom this year, I wonder if it will be every day when they see a classroom, just like a, a little pin, like, look what you're missing, look what you're missing. And it might normalize it more if everybody is kind of in a non-classroom, atypical environment. And that's just me thinking. And again, you don't have to answer. It was just a thought I had.
No, I can jump uh on that. It gives me another opportunity to commend Joan Miller and the executive board of MEA for their collaboration and work with us. Um, Sarah and I sat down with them uh earlier this week uh to continue conversations on um people that are electing to be fully remote this year. And I, you know, there will be some people that just cannot come back uh into the buildings. And so they will be dedicated remote teachers because they have to stay at home. And how those decisions are made is still in process. Um, but uh I would say that I don't even want to give a number. Most of our teaching faculty, my expectation, are back in school and back in their classrooms.
And my last question is, the quarter and the try, um, is it, is it that you're figuring out, will it be quarters or try? Or if if you're a school that's on the trimester situation, you come back at the try?
That's
Okay.
Anybody else with any questions? All right, John, um, how would you like to call on the facilitators?
Um, I uh sent them out a, an order list today, uh, but I will introduce each of them and uh have them, uh, I've given them very specific parameters, three to five minutes, because with nine subcommittee reports, we could be here all evening. So to set the example, my colleague in crime, my co-host Nan Murphy, the Assistant Superintendent, will talk about teaching and learning pre K to twelve.
All right, and Nan can unmute herself, so.
Okay, well, good evening, everyone. Um, I, I am excited to be giving you a little bit of a background this evening. I can't even believe, Dr. Bucky, that we have been together seven weeks and all we have accomplished as a team in seven weeks. Um, so I want to have, I want to give a little shout out first and foremost to the team members. The, this here is, compiles all of the people who were part of helping to create our teaching and learning reentry plan. So all of these folks, um, teachers, union members, school leaders, parent population, all of us came together. There were thirty-four of us, came together, um, sometimes weekly, sometimes three times a week, sometimes two times a week. And we really worked very diligently to create the plans that um we're going to be welcoming students back into their school communities with. And I am forever grateful. I can't imagine ever putting forward this kind of work to somebody who's new in a position to come in and facilitate a group of thirty-four different people um to try to get such an important task completed. And yet it was not only something we completed successfully, but I think everybody really felt that the, the work was enjoyable. Um, and we, we enjoyed getting to know each other. Uh, I want to share with you um some of the driving factors around all of the work we did. We really anchored in on certain priorities, uh, student and staff, health and safety, of course, being number one, student and staff, social, emotional needs and well-being. So as we created these plans, all of these points um drove decisions that we made when we would draft a plan, we'd go back and we'd anchor all of these components against the plan. And if one of them was an outlier, um, the plan got changed. So maximizing face-to-face equity and access, special education services, all of these things, the parent hardships and what we're hearing from parents and continue to hear from parents were consistently considered and part of the process. Um, so I thank everybody for having the right perspective in entering the work. Uh, now that all of our plans are in place and we are ready to move forward, uh, the work is continuing. We have broken up into six subcommittees. We have advisory committees for principals, as well as two additional committees. One is focused on social, emotional preparedness of students and staff. And um referring back to what John's comments were about really supporting our parents at home with remote learning, we have a subcommittee working on that. They are tasked with doing some research, pulling articles. We want to um help, have Kate help us c- create a page for our website that pit, that has continually puts up new information for parents about supporting their students. We'd like to have, um, we are going to have a remote teaching, learning opportunity, teaching our parents how to use Zoom, how to use Google Classroom, and how to use um some of the other platforms. So we're working on those recordings. But it's been an absolute honor to be part of this work. And I feel privileged to have gotten to know so many wonderful people in the Marblehead teaching and learning community and feel really encouraged about the people that are moving this work forward. So um with that, I'll open it up to questions if there's time. If not, we can move right along.
Madam Chair, I defer to you.
Sure. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just want to say that this has been one of the most collaborative experiences I've ever, I've been part of. I've been very impressed.
All right, thanks, Nan.
Right.
John, who's up next?
We'll have Todd Bloodgood, who will do a facilities and transportation update.
All right, let me find Todd and I will unmute him. All right, Todd, you should be unmuted.
I am unmuted. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna start off by saying that uh all the people that we've, we have on our, our subcommittee have just been wonderful. They've had great ideas, um, definite uh, you know, uh, needs that they have thought of that we haven't, uh, which, which is exactly what we needed. And the, the input has just been wonderful. Um, so I'm gonna jump right into uh what everyone i- has been uh, you know, concerned about the most is our, is our HVAC systems throughout the school district. Uh, we are in process right now of having a uh computer control company um adding some different uh mechanisms so that every school that is computer-controlled, uh, the outside air dampers on the large units up on the roof, at least, at minimum, every two hours will open one hundred percent to dump fresh air into these buildings uh for twenty minutes minimum. There's also gonna be on this program, a uh, an actual red button. So if I press the button, we can do that at any time that we feel we need to. Um, so that, that's part of it. We also uh have contracted with um a company we've used in the past for our asbestos abatement monitoring. They also have an engineer that is a uh professional at the determining HVA systems, their efficiency for all the flow that we require. Um, the indoor air quality testing is what they're working on, the filtration airflow patterns, pr- different pressurizations, different rooms. Nurses in the isolation rooms will require different pressur- proper pressurizations than the rest of the schools. Those have to be more of a negative. Um, once they are done and they come through and they do their air quality testing, it will probably be a two-step process. They recommend highly that it's done prior to and after there are people in the buildings so they can get the uh levels of uh carbon dioxide from people just breathing in, in these buildings and see how the flow is going with those. Um, when I met with them, we spoke at great length. They asked me everything that we've been looking into and also doing, uh, which includes all the exhaust fans on all the roofs, all the filter replacements, and uh, you know, just making sure that all that, that stuff is working, which we are going through piece by piece, making sure if we have to replace an exhaust fan, we're replacing it. If it's a belt or just a motor, whatever it is, we're just getting right at it. And uh where we can, in the older schools that are not computer-controlled and do not have these rooftop units, what we're doing is replacing the exhaust fans with larger units. So we can draw more air out of these buildings. And the whole trick is to get as much fresh air into these buildings as we possibly can. So that being said, we've also uh acquired some air purifiers that are gonna go into the isolation rooms as well as in nurses' offices, which have a HEPA filter as well as a charcoal filter built into them that can be changed. We've also uh acquired, I believe, enough signage uh for all the schools, including for, you know, the uh spacing, you know, their stickers you put on the floor for, please stand here. Um, we have arrows for the directionals. We have hand sanitizers being installed throughout. We also have uh mobile ones that we can put where we need. If we need more in certain areas, we just move them with signage, hand washing signs, mask-wearing posters, uh, you know, for uh entry doors, you know, do not enter this premises without a mask on. So, and then outside, what we're, I'm trying to get, well, not trying, we are gonna get is uh stencils that we can paint onto the ground using the uh turf paint, which is water-based product that wears away and washes away naturally quickly uh in the shape of a magician. So we'll space them out six feet apart for the entryways. We are still working on getting the tents. Uh, Michelle and I were, were talking about that today. Um, you know, how many we're going to need at each school. We're gonna need different, two different sizes. You know, one is, say, a twenty by twenty for the outdoor classrooms. The other one is a twenty by forty for the kids to line up under when it's raining or snowing or what have you. Uh, we've also worked on, uh, some people have already gotten their uh masks fittings for the N ninety-five masks. Some of the nurses, some of the bus drivers, we still have to get some of the special education people fitted, as well as uh the bus monitors. Um, the water situation, we are gonna be turning off all of the water fountains. And it was discussed at great length. And uh, I think Sarah Fox, I think you came up with the, the winning note on why we are going to be going with water bottles instead of dispensers. Because even if it's a touchless dispenser, if a student shoves their bottle up into this unit, it can spread. So we will be handing out, I'm working with Richard Kelleher, uh, so we can make sure we have enough and the proper sizes. Not every student needs the big bottles. And some of them only require the small bottles, but we are required to provide drinking water. So we're working on that as well. Uh, once we have uh finished with our engineers and the recommendations that they make, we'll be able to continually monitor uh with whatever they suggest, we will do on how to continually monitor the, the air quality in the buildings. So I think um, Michelle, unless you have something else, uh, I think that's about it for the buildings, for the buses. We are, we, like I said, we've had the bus drivers fit-tested. The spacing, we've already figured that out. Um, maximum between twenty to twenty-three on our sixty-two-seat buses can fit on the smaller uh buses that transport the special education students. We will only be able to transport approximately four children at a time due to the fact that there's a driver and a monitor on that bus. And then even our biggest bus, which has no uh wheelchair lift in it, is seventy-two seats. We can only fit twenty-five on that. So we will be running, I'm sure, multiple runs when need be. But uh we also have a new bus on order, so that will give us four large buses to try to accommodate um getting all these kids back and forth in a timely manner, and of course, safely. So uh, if any, I'll, I'll end it there, 'cause I can keep going forever. But if anyone has questions, please feel free. Yeah, Megan?
Um, just on that bus, Todd, do we have any idea when it's scheduled to be delivered?
We probably won't get that till November. Uh, they take three months to build. I wish we could go to the, to the lot and, and grab it, but
Just pick it up.
Yeah, we have to specify things like this, the newest one will also have a wheelchair lift. That way, we'll have three large buses that have a wheelchair lift. So even if, say, one had to be put out of service for repairs, we still have two other large buses with the wheelchairs lifting them. we still have two other large buses with the wheelchairs lifting them.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Sarah?
To follow up on what you just said about not having it till November, are you confident we can cover everybody until November?
We will just have to be running multiple runs. And that's initially what we thought we might have to do anyways. Because we did, you know, we can't have a pile of kids waiting at the bus stop, number one. And then we can't also pack them into the buses like we normally would. You know, they're made to hold that many children, but. So we're going to have to figure out some timing issues. We're still working on that. But if we're only transporting, say, half of the student population on any given day, that would also help in that sense till we get that new big bus.
Okay. And then do we have dedicated bus drivers? I know sometimes we share between the janitors and the buses, it's just the load on the janitors is so much higher this year than ever before. Do we have dedicated bus drivers?
We actually have, we, this district only has one true dedicated bus driver. We have three others that have, I'm sorry, two others that have their licenses for the large buses. And where we have right now on school spring, we're looking for two part-time bus drivers so that they can just come in morning or afternoon, whatever we need. You are correct, there's so much more on them this time. And, you know, I can't say enough good about my staff. They, they'll just, they just do whatever they have to. They're very good and they've worked so hard this summer. So I'm very proud of them.
Thank you, Todd. We're setting them up for success and we're not overtaxing anybody. But I just also want to, on the water bottle thing, before I get 100 emails from Sustainable Marblehead that I broke their heart, I think that the message will, should go out, much like it did to Bell, that kids come to.
Full water bottle. And since they're only there for half day, you know, hopefully we're making, we're getting through on that full water bottle. So, you know, we'll have water at school for kids, but this isn't a novelty, everybody gets a bottle situation. I just put that plug in because I know my mailbox will be full from sustainable.
Oh, no, I remember when we were talking about it and we were discussing that it would be such a waste and such a huge step backwards for recycling. That's why we were initially talking about the touchless dispensers. But in the end, just to keep everybody safe as possible, unfortunately, and hopefully it will only be for a short amount of time. You know, we would go with the giving out the bottles of water if they need it. If they could bring their own, that would be great. Even if they brought two with them to school, that would be wonderful. But we have to supply them. And I think that using these, handing out the bottles of water is the safest way right now.
Thanks, Todd. I know you asked Michelle if she had anything to add. I'm going to try to, okay, Michelle, you're unmuted. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I think Todd pretty much covered it all. And I just cannot say enough about how Todd has been working on this 24 hours a day and our entire committee. So I really want to say thanks for that. And the feedback we have got has been tremendous and, you know, has really helped us. So I want to thank everyone who has contributed to this venture.
Great. Thanks, Michelle, and thank you very much, Todd. Assuming nobody else has any questions for Todd. All right. Looks like we're ready to move forward. John, who's next?
All right, we will hear from Kathy Hennessy and the technology committee.
All right. Kathy, let me unmute. You should be able to go, Kathy.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, Sarah. So thanks first of all for letting us all speak tonight. It's, I think it's a good way of just kind of sharing what we've all been working on. I was very fortunate with the tech subcommittee. We had 14 members, two of whom were incoming freshmen and seniors at the high school. We had five parents, four of whom were also staff members, teachers, or even in my department. We had representatives from all the levels. So we had three people from the high school, Michelle Carlson, Susan Shatfield, Henry Christensen. The middle school, we had Elizabeth Lutwick and the new gal Julia Ferreira, who jumped right in. She just started working and she was a member of high committee. From Village, we had Jonathan Heller and Kate Ferengbatt. And then from Glover School, we had Janet Moller and Diane Gorra. And then Gretchen Langton and Heather Grisato, both their children. And then Deborah Laramie was the parent. And it was very, it was very informative for me to hear all of the different suggestions. A lot of the teachers this summer took PD courses with sales say collaborative and online courses. And then Henry Christensen was, he shared a number of the slides and whatever recommendations of software that his instructor was sharing. And so those are just additional tools, I guess, to have at our toolbox. We have looked at probably 12 to 15 software packages. We're still in the process of getting information from each principal, just, you know, they're polling their teachers to say, okay, you know, we know you like to use, you know, all of these applications or programs, but we really need to pare it down. And, you know, just so we have standardization across the district so that we know that all grade two teachers, all grade three teachers are at least using the same basic list. And then if they want to enhance that, they can. There's just a lot of work involved. We're working right now besides getting the numbers because, because we, you know, as the enrollment numbers change, a lot of the subscriptions are based on student enrollment. So as we get the more, you know, static, I guess, enrollment, just so we can, you know, get a good idea because we don't want to pay for numbers that we don't have, but we want to have enough for the students that we do have. We kind of, we addressed our committee, just kind of looked at kind of four areas. Software, hardware, communication, and then the technical support piece. As has been mentioned, it's so important for the technical support, professional development, not just for the teachers, but also for the students and their families. It's a great idea to have not really an open house night, but like a, you know, a PD night for families, for those people that would be interested. So that's something that we certainly would be pursuing. And it would be great to have on this, the website, just like a tech support portal, more or less, that would have the information with videos from the different vendors or videos that the teachers produce or whatever that would be instructive and ideally just short little, you know, just to get people started. And then if they have questions, you know, sometimes you don't know what you don't know, you know, to ask. There was a great suggestion from both superintendent and Nan about developing a tech glossary because a lot of times we become immersed in all this lingo and we don't, we don't realize it. People don't always understand what we're referencing. So that is something that we're working, that we're working on and we'll definitely plan to have on the website just to explain to parents, you know, what do we mean when we say we're going to get, you know, a platform called Clever? You know, what does that mean? What does it entail? What's going to be on it? So those are the things that we're working on. That's the software piece. As far as the hardware, certainly addressed the requisition from staff members. A lot of them had, didn't always have a good device to go back and forth from school to home. So that's being addressed, unfortunately, like everything else. Supply and demand has really cut into what's available. So, you know, we have laptops, as you know, for the staff on Arda. And then once they come in and they deliver it, you know, like the tech department will have to work to get them configured, inventoried, and then distributed. So that's something that we, I can't say looking forward to, but we are looking forward to the arrival of those devices. And the same thing for students. Right now, I'm still in the final processes of gathering back the devices that we loaned out in the spring just so we have a chance to, first of all, clean them, evaluate them, and, you know, and then we'll have a better idea of what we have on hand for when students are in school as well as what, you know, and then ideally with John's survey that, that will the results from that will give us a much better indication of what the needs are for the family. In terms of, you know, devices, you know, to be more than one device, what happens with their internet access at home? We're in the process of evaluating, trying to get numbers on what exactly, what's the bandwidth draw? Like how much, how much is needed to support one session of a video conference? And so we're in the process of trying to get those numbers to be able to extrapolate out. And then, you know, and then as far as, you know, I mean, there are just different pieces of the the network. We had replaced switches at the high school this year to improve our network at the high school. I've actually contacted Comcast, trying to see if there's some kind of a partnership that the schools could form in terms of with Comcast's Internet Essentials program, that maybe that would be something that we could, you know, because sometimes we're also looking at hotspots, but sometimes the hotspot might solve like an individual problem, but it doesn't improve the overall, you know, capacity when you have more than one user in the house. So that's what we're working on. A lot of work. We've enjoyed working together. It was a good group. They shared about what they, what they liked, what they didn't like about a certain, and of course, you know, different suggestions coming in from teachers. So I guess that's my summary. Any questions?
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions from anyone? Sarah?
Thank you, Kathy, so much. I actually wanted to give you accommodation. I've been, I'm just amazed at the amount of hours that you've put in, in the last year, particularly the last few months, to make sure everybody's up and running. And I know that's appreciated by everybody. One question I do have, I liked on the survey how it said, give you an idea of what a good device would be, you know, seven-hour battery and things like that. But I think there's a lot of parents out there, myself included, that don't know what we don't know. And could the tech committee release an FAQ about, you know, to have multiple children live streaming for a period of time? This is what your internet should look like because I don't want to, you know, I know the school side of things is looking into that, but for these children that will be remote learning, where it is going to be much different than the spring, and there might not have been as much live simultaneously screening, of multiple devices. If we could release an FAQ to families, what we can be doing on our end to maximize results? Because I know with Comcast and Verizon, there's a lead time to kind of up our game if we need to.
Thank you, Sarah. That's a good question. I mean, and that's something that we're working on. I mean, we're trying to figure out what exactly, you know, does, happens in the house, you know, when you have, you know, a parent working from home and two or three children that are trying to do their, you know, their session with their teacher or just doing their regular work. And I know I have seen some documentation with those, okay, fine. The average Zoom or Meet might require three and a half minutes, you know, so in order for a family to accommodate that, they have to have a certain speed router, you know, and so they have to look to see what, you know, what their upload and their download speeds are, that kind of thing. So it's hard. We can certainly put an FAQ out, but I don't know, we can't change it, you know, for families. We can't improve it. We can just find, put out there what other people have discovered, but that's certainly something that we're working on. And an FAQ about a lot of things never hurts.
Yeah, because I think a lot of parents might think they're okay, but when they see your data and compare it to what they have, they would be the distracting student, you know, because their technology isn't working.
That's a great suggestion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. Megan, you've got a question?
It's not a question. It's just kind of to support some of the work. Kathy, I mean, you mentioned across the board, at least for buildings or grades, looking at standardization across applications. So that's one piece. You know, I think I'm really happy to hear. I know for a lot of parents, that was a struggle in the spring, the lack of consistency across that. And then, you know, the multitude of applications that were used. So I just, you know, want to stress that work and appreciate that you're heading in that direction. And also, you know, that we mentioned earlier with John, the kind of assistance to parents and training on those pieces. So, you know, I appreciate you continuing that work in the technology side as well. So I just wanted to stress those points. They're important ones, I think. So thank you.
No, they definitely are. Thanks.
Yeah, that clever platform is really a neat thing that I think is going to allow teachers to really use a lot of the things that they want to use and then allow parents not to have to keep track of a whole bunch of things. So it, I think that there's a lot of promise in that. And I've listened to Kathy do updates on the oversight committee. And so, you know, kind of listening to it takes shape. It's a pretty cool program. Emily, did you have something?
I just want to say that what Kathy had said about on the website, having a tech, what a tech support portal, I think that is a must. And if there's a way that people could actually email in a question right there. So instead of having to like figure out who to email it to, and then I know that adds extra work, but just as a way to get the support, like, you know, directly.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
No, whatever would be on the website, we would certainly have an email address that would say, you know, if you have any questions or, you know, click here and then we would get the emails and do the best we could to.
And having little videos, I think that's great of what, you know, where they say like circle, like press this and where it's circled with an arrow, like to go through the steps, like of all the different programs, like the screenshots, I think the more that's on there for parents and students, the better. Well, I think that's great.
That's, and that's where we benefit from the expertise from the teachers. Because, you know, the tech department as a group, we don't use, you know, like a program, you know, like Brain Pop or something like that, but the teachers that have been using it with their, with their students, they're the ones that we're going to lean on. I know Diane Gorra has spent some time with me just running through Seesaw, you know, because I had never seen it. So we tend to get involved just in the technical setup part of it, but it's good, you know.
Oh, okay.
So just to kind of draw on the experience from the teachers and have them, as Nan said, follow those videos, so. Anybody else? Okay, thanks very much.
I think that's it, Kathy. Thank you.
All right. As a new superintendent, I'm very appreciative of the learning curve that I've had on facilities, transportation, and technology. And so big shout out to the facilitators of those. Perhaps no more important subcommittee in the midst of a pandemic is the health and safety. And so I will shoot it over to Deanna McMahon to talk about the really great work that that group has been doing. Deanna?
Hi, everybody. So let's see. I just want to start with saying that I feel very blessed to work in a community where so many people are willing to volunteer their time to work productively using research, experience, and discussion to create a plan that would help Marblehead navigate through this COVID-19 time. There were 21 members on my committee with all types of work and life experience. There was the nurses from all the public schools, Deb Cullen, Beth Stanijev, Megan Kalpin, myself, Deanna McMahon, Elizabeth Rostrin, Amanda Rivers, and Karen Doherty. The teachers on my committee were Leah Bordieri, who is a teacher at the high school, Maura Dartley Rocco, who is a teacher at the Veteran School, Sally Chevry, who is a teacher at Glover. And the parents I had were diverse. I had Dr. Jill Diamond, Dr. Daniel Blander, Vanessa Evans Shepherd, Leanne Holman, Susan Spencer, Sandra Callahan, Carrie Anne Driscoll McKeerney, Suzie Shiwitz, Jenny Calichman, Board of Health member Michelle Gottlieb, and Administrator Lindsay Page. And I want to thank them all. I don't know if any of them are here, but I want to thank them all because we did all work, put our heads together and had back and forth many times to try to figure out a plan that was going to work for our school system. Since we were working with grades pre-K through 12, our committee divided up into three groups and I broke everyone down into groups separated by pre-K to third grade. And then because we have third grade at Village, I also had another group that was third grade to sixth grade. And then the final group was seventh grade to 12th grade. We met over several weeks and worked on the health and safety plan for the district, keeping in mind that we were compiling information and creating a plan meant to keep families, students, and staff of all ages safe. We are using the CDC and the local Board of Health, along with Massachusetts Department of Public Health, to structure our plan and will continue to do, use them as reference because things are ever changing. Every single day I'm seeing new stuff. John can attest to that because I'm shooting it to him and saying, should we talk about this? Can we, so I apologize for those. This is by no being spent easy because of the numerous unknowns and moment-to-moment changes that we need to keep up with. And even now and into the future, our plan will be pivoting along as we work to keep the community health and safe, keep the community healthy and safe and informed. The next few steps are to create a health-certifying screening tool that will be used for everyone before they head into school or work and to create strong teaching tools through professional development, video, signage, in order to reinforce the safety of the community and keeping everybody up on the changes. I am also planning on putting together some. I am also planning on putting together some scenarios for the Marblehead Public Schools' website so that people can see, like, if you are a person who was in contact with someone that you know is a positive case, what you would do. I also want to post some definitions because, like I see, a lot of the words that come from COVID are just not words we hear all the time, and I think the definitions will help people. I'm going to create this to be a piece of competency for the staff and to help people feel comfortable. I want them to know that the nurses in the buildings do know what we're talking about and that we are informed for comfort, and I want the community to be able to go to this website and be able to say, okay, this is what I do. Of course, we will also be available for parents to reach out. They reach out all the time, and I don't think at this time it'll be any different. So thank you. Does anyone have any questions for me? I'm sure that some things might come up.
Anybody?
Now I'm surprised. I don't want to, I don't want to head down the rabbit hole, but I did, because Deanna mentioned something. They updated guidance yesterday that originally if a COVID-positive person were in a classroom, all of the students in that classroom would be considered in need of the 14-day quarantine. They have updated that. I think they were trying to be helpful, but to say if you were within six feet of someone for 15 minutes or longer. And I was interviewed by The Paper today, and they've already put this up, so that's why I'm addressing it with School Committee tonight. As a parent, that's probably not very comforting to me to say, okay, my child was seven feet away for only 11 minutes, so it's okay. And so as that guidance has been updated, I think that it's going to cause anxiety for families. And so Deanna will support this, I'm sure. While we do use the CDC and that, local Boards of Health can impose a stricter or a stronger scenario or a condition which schools will operate. And so even though they have updated that guidance, I think the Health and Safety Committee is going to want to look at that and see if that's the scenario we want to use in Marblehead.
Yes, we are planning on using the description of contact tracing very firmly, just because it helps people kind of get back and out of the rabbit hole. It is that you are in contact with a person for more than 15 minutes, six feet or closer, and it is even when you have a mask on. So it will be different depending on the elementary schools where the kids are staying in the classrooms consistently, because the contact is that entire class that they're sitting there. It will be who is sitting near them, so we are asking for assigned seatage so that, for the most part, we can know who was within what kind of spacing with kids. And then when you get to the high school, it would be a little bit different, even at Veterans, a little different because kids are moving. So it's still going to be based on that greater than 15 minutes within six feet. And when you are masked, you are considered a contact because the regular typical person in the building is not going to have N95. The nurses will have N95, there will be a few staff people that have N95, and those are not considered close contacts because N95 is fitted and sized, and that's to keep us protected for being in contact, taking care of kids that might be longer than 15 minutes, closer than six feet.
Great, thank you, Deanna.
Thanks.
Sarah, do you have a quick question?
Yes, John's rabbit hole statement brought me to my question. He was tricking me, I almost didn't. I, I do have concerns about this idea, especially at the elementary age groups of this 15 minutes, because then we go outside for a mask break, and then, you know, we're in the hallway and we're walking, and it gets gray really, really quick. Johnny was two rows over from Sally, and so it was, I just think it gets gray really, really quick. So that is a concern, definitely. And then contact tracing, I know as it stands now, a person has to agree to contact tracing, and they cannot be legally compelled. Is that different in the schools? Will the school be contacted to do the contact tracing themselves? Or if Johnny is positive, will it be up to Johnny's mother and the honor system to tell the state, the contact tracer at the state who sat next to him and give a release to release that ability to talk to the school? Because I know there's a lot of stigma that people worry about, and my concern is if Johnny's mother says, no, I'm not playing ball, can the school release the information?
Okay, so for your first question, the illness is considered an air droplet. So an air droplet is I sneeze, I cough, and that comes out of my mouth, and it may travel six feet, but if I have a mask on, it's not going to travel six feet because I've got my mask on. But potentially, it could travel six feet and drop to the ground. This illness does not float around in the air and like end up in other spaces, other than those people that are within six feet of that positive case. Does that help you at all?
No, I completely understand the science behind it. What I, I also, I have five kids under the age of 10.
Okay.
I also know that they float around much more freely than droplets.
Yeah.
That's what I don't trust. They touch everything, they walk by, they touch Johnny's desk, even though they're not, like, it's the kids I actually don't trust.
Yeah, and that's true. There's not a lot of research that people are getting sick from surfaces, although we will be having extra disinfecting going on, and high-touch surfaces will be taken care of as well. Going to your other question, it's kind of a twofold. The nurses in the school will be helping with contact tracing, but we will be working along with the local Board of Health, because any positive case that comes from Marblehead is automatically being identified to the Board of Health. I spoke to Tracy Gurula, the nurse at the Board of Health this morning, and she told me that she's been getting results on positives before the doctors' offices are even getting the results. And when this all first started, the nurses in the system, we all volunteered and worked with Maven for contact tracing, so we all know how that works. Yes, if we call someone, they certainly can say that they don't want to answer our questions. We'll hope that they will and try to educate them as to why we need to know the contacts, but it's also another reason why we're going to have signed seats so that we can kind of manage what we would, some of it will be guestimating, that's just the way this whole illness is. How long were they actually next to each other? But again, it's, it's, it's a collaboration between the school and the public health. It's different if a person is a staff person and then they live in another town. That goes to their public health. And then we, as nurses, can ask them their contacts that they felt like they were with closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes during the school day, and then we'll work along with their Board of Health if it ends up being a situation, Metco student who doesn't live in town, or a student tuitioned in, those kinds of things. So we will be involved in it, working along with Board of Health.
Thank you, Deanna.
Yep.
So because we're running a little long, the Committee Chair for Communications, yours truly, will cede my time to the good Senator from Food Service, Mr. Kelleher, to talk about the Food Service Subcommittee.
All right, Richard, you should be unmuted.
I am, Sarah. Thank you very much. It's been fits and starts for us, waiting for a firm plan to develop, but we've put together a pretty good plan with the help of a number of members of my staff, Michelle Cresta and Mark Zimmerman, a parent who brought a great deal of knowledge, experience to the plate. So that's all been a great help. What it looks like we're going to do is we're going to open two kitchens and deliver food to each of the buildings. The parents who are remote will be able to pick up their meals from 10:45 to 11:45. The in-school students will be able to pick up from noon to 12:30. This will keep, maintain the distancing, maintain separation between the groups, and hopefully allow for smooth delivery of meals. We've developed a Google Form so that parents can order for the entire week. At any time during the week, they can order from Monday to Friday. The form includes information as to school cohort, fully remote, allergies, religious concerns relative to food ingredients. I think we've pretty much covered all the bases on that, so hopefully that'll be sent out every Friday for the following week in order to get the menus and everything into the folks' hands. Transactions, we are not going to be doing any cash transactions at all. Thanks to Michelle, we've been able to add an e-check, payment method to the, through MySchoolBucks, which is less expensive than the, using a credit card or debit card. The fees are lower, and then we'll still accept checks in the schools, we'll be putting lock boxes in each of the schools, so checks can be dropped off. So that pretty much covers it. We sort of had to wait until we had a firmer plan, which, and I thank to John and Michelle for their guidance and advice, it's been invaluable in getting all this done. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Richard. Any questions, anyone?
Just to thank you, Richard. I'm a Richard fan, so.
We all are.
Well, thank you very much. It's appreciated. And I do have to say how impressed I am. I've been doing this a long time, and this is the first time I've ever been party to or witnessed to the basic rebuilding of a school district in effectively eight weeks. It's an impressive group that I'm very happy to be part of.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks for that update.
All right. That brings us to our last, but certainly not least. I joked this morning in the Communications Subcommittee that as much as schools are about teaching and learning, there is nothing that beats an athletic controversy to bring people to a school committee meeting. And so the released guidance yesterday about fall sports and what districts will be able to do, Greg's job got a lot more interesting, and I'm just very appreciative of the work that the Athletics and Student Activities Subcommittee has done. So Greg?
Greg, you are unmuted.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it did get exponentially more complicated yesterday, so I just wanted to give a quick shout out and thank you to our committee that we have. It's a great combination of teachers and administrators, parents and kids as well. We have Dan Bauer, the high school principal, Matt Fox, the Vets' Principal, Mark Tarmey, our Assistant Athletic Director, Will Deja, Dan, our athletic trainer, Mike Giardi, a high school teacher and multi-sport coach, Andrew Scoglio, our lead music and chorus teacher, Annie Madden, a village school teacher and coach, John Dormer, a parent and coach, Kristen Jellison, a parent, Muffy Pocquette, a parent and booster president, Julia Ferreira, Veterans Middle School Assistant Principal, Sarah Fox, a parent and school committee member, Rob Day is a parent and youth soccer president in town, Merle Shell, who is a member of the CPAC, and we had Caroline Brennan and Will Shell, who are both students at the high school. So we have a great mix of kids, a great mix of people on our committee, and it's been awesome. And kind of like John said, unlike other committees, we kind of just got really going yesterday with the guidance that we got from the state. We have been having great discussions about, you know, possible scenarios, paying attention to what youth sports are doing in town and surrounding towns, talking about how we can try and make fine arts happen anyway, since they can kind of happen a little more easily for remotely, and discussing ways to keep our kids and coaches busy and productive. Some highlights from the meetings that we've had, the MIAA, who is the Governing Board of Athletics in the state, they created a COVID-19 task force and have been working very closely with the Board of Directors, the MIAA, as well as DESI. So kind of taking what recommendations they have given and trying to break those down to see what we can do with those, talking about the pluses and minuses of cohorts within athletics and fine arts and how we can make that work. Really actually talking about the growing concern for club sports and pay-to-play opportunities and how we're going to try to work around that, discussing ways to promote our student athletes who are trying to play at the next level and how coaches can help them remotely. Really, there are three major areas of concern that we've kind of come up with now are transportation limitations, like Todd talked about. It's going to be very, very challenging to work with those, to try to come after school runs, to try to get our kids to any of our surrounding towns that we're going to play against. Our student safety, obviously, as well as our athletic training, how that's going to work. And finally, having our coaches be more like policemen here when they're trying to worry about the rules and regulations rather than focusing on teaching our kids proper techniques and teaching our student athletes how to, you know, play the game and teaching the best that they can, like they're supposed to be doing. Again, like John said, just Monday, the MIAA Task Force brought recommendations to DESI. Almost all fall sports are allowed to go and play under EEA guidelines, which is good. However, there are going to be a lot of modifications made. Those are all being worked on right now by each individual MIAA Sport Committee, and those are due to the MIAA on Tuesday. Interesting, they're going to make a second fall season, which is not going to be in the fall at all, it's going to be February 22nd to April 25th. That's going to be mostly geared for football and cheering in some other schools who are not able to have a fall season. Once we hit February 22nd, we'll see how much snow is on the ground, and I guess we can go from there. And then the spring season got bumped up a little bit to April 26th, and that'll go through July 3rd for a state championship if they have playoffs. Moving forward, I'm meeting with the NEC ADs tomorrow morning, and then again with ADs and principals on Monday morning, just to kind of talk about what are we going to do and try to be together as a unified front. We are working with coaches and hopefully get some PD opportunities for modifications for their sport once they come out on Tuesday, working with state guidelines on music, arts, and drama to try to figure out how we can make them work, whether it's remotely or if it's going to be possible outdoor venues. Meeting with all the fall captains on Monday morning as well to discuss updates on what's going on. And finally, I wanted to give a huge, huge shout out to our student athletes and our coaches, as we came within a half a point, it came in second place, within a half a point of earning another Dalton Award, which is the best-winning percentage in Division III in the state. So a huge shout out to them. If anybody's listening, it's a big congrats to them. And I think if we had a spring season, we probably would have, would have taken it home, but is what it is. So any questions?
Thanks, Greg. Any questions?
Lot of moving parts, Greg.
Absolutely.
Greg's done a really great job, too, of balancing the discussion of not just athletics, but the arts and other activities, and there's been a lot of contribution across the board. He's been very equitable for activities across the board. I've been impressed.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right, anybody else? All right, thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
John, did that wrap us up, I think you said?
It does. That's the end of our Subcommittee reports. So I appreciate everyone kind of updating the School Committee on the work that has happened so far, and it's not over. The Committees are continuing to meet and subdivide into work groups and task forces as new information becomes available. So I am indebted to them for their professionalism and their expertise on helping us develop that reopening plan that we submitted.
Absolutely, yeah. And thank you to everyone for coming and giving us the overview tonight. It was really helpful to hear from everybody.
Can I ask you one communication question, John? I'm sorry about my visitor here. Do you know when or if you might be releasing the results of this survey about how many parents are going hybrid and how many parents are going remote? I just think that there's some interest in the community on that.
Sure. Didn't people hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. We will be releasing the information. The deadline for the survey is Friday. I am not confident that we will have all the responses by Friday, but we have, Emily Dean is working with our English language learner family, Eric Oxford and CPAC are reaching out to make sure that those families have contributed to the survey. So I would say maybe mid to late next week, we could give some kind of 30,000-foot overview of the survey results. Because they are also informing teacher assignments and class lists that I know people are very anxious to receive, and in working with the principals, they have said that we should be able to publish, produce, promote those. And in working with the principals, they have said that we should be able to publish, produce, promote those August 31st. So that would be the teacher's first day back in the buildings. And so probably by end of day on August 31st, the teacher assignments and class lists and things will be made available to the public.
That's great. That's really helpful to know for a lot of parents. All right. So that, John, that we do have the the calendar revisions as a vote right now. Do you feel confident in the dates that you would like us to vote or would you rather us wait until the next meeting?
I think if you're comfortable taking a vote, knowing that the first day is September 14th and the last day is June 14th, we're not changing any of the pre-voted on professional development days or religious holidays, February vacation, April vacation, those are all remaining as originally voted. It is just the change from DESI, the 180 requirement to 170. So that gives us the September 14th start and the June 14th end. If you're comfortable voting or if you would like to see that in calendar form before you vote, I could put that together for you.
I'm comfortable asking for a motion. For so I'll ask for a motion to approve revisions to the calendar for a first day of school start on September 14th and a final day of school with no snow days for for, yeah, June 14th.
So moved.
Megan moved. Sarah, second. Any questions or anything on that?
Do we have to make up snow days this year because we have a remote learning platform in place like our it's June 14th hard and fast? Please say it's hard and fast.
I really want it to be a celebration of my birthday, so I'm going to say it's hard and fast, but I imagine DESI will trump me on that and put out guidance as to how districts will handle snow days. So I can't really give a firm answer on that.
They haven't touched on that yet. I know like Rhode Island wiped them away already. Okay.
So I just have a question on the conferences that we had in like November, December. And I don't have the calendar in front of me right now pulled up, so just bear with me. But do though, will any of those change? Because I do think we had some half days or some days off in there.
The conference days that were scheduled. Have this right in front of me. Were December 3rd. And so that is past the first quarter at vets in the high school and is right as the first trimester will close in the pre-K to six buildings. So I think that teachers will have sufficient information to still hold those parent conference days.
But does it affect? So were they half days or days off?
Yeah, they're half days. They're not days off.
So we'd still have the, you know, for in a hybrid still, we'd still have the school day. Okay.
There will be no such thing as a half day, hybrid half day, like like we're not cutting down beyond four. Okay.
No, that's one variable that I just can't take on. Quarter days we will not be having.
All right. Any other questions? Thoughts? All right. We've got a motion has been moved and seconded. I will call for a roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries five to zero.
Note too that we we did talk about, we'll get in deeper on on calendar at a different time. This is separate than the big picture calendar picture.
Correct. This is just the calendar revisions for the 2020 2021 school year. All right. That brings us along to the schedule of bills. So that was in everyone's packet with all of the scanned invoices. So can I get a motion to approve the identified schedule of bills totaling
So moved.
Sarah moved.
Second.
Megan, second. Any questions for Michelle on that?
Michelle, I do just have a few clarifying questions. It won't affect my vote today, but just as a heads up, I'll be in touch.
Okay, sounds good.
David?
Well, and I I'd just like to say, I think it's it's nice that the way the schedule bills are laid out, there's supporting documents that are including included in the package and just provides a lot more clarity. So thanks for that, Michelle.
Yeah, absolutely.
You're welcome.
All right. So I will call roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yeah.
All right, that passed us five to zero. Thanks, everyone. That brings us along to the operating protocol. Again, I will let you open that up.
Okay, sure. So this is kind of the third time, I think, we've seen these now. So from our retreat on Friday, we had a long discussion about them. There were, you know, I made three changes as a result of that. One was a minor change to point number five on how we govern, just taking out the one little sentence there. I updated under communication, the social media piece, so just adding in a reference to the MAS C social media guidelines. And then the other one that we kind of had a long discussion about on Friday was, which number is it here? Under how we communicate, point number three, channeling requests for information through the superintendent for district staff and town officials. So the what I did there, my understanding from our conversation was that the committee wanted that line nuanced a bit. I'm not the softest person around. So what I did was I only it had referenced channeling those requests through the superintendent and or the school committee chair. So Sarah, I hope you don't mind, I actually took the school committee chair out of it, just because I felt like that was another layer that maybe wasn't necessarily pertinent. You know, the point of this protocol is really to make the superintendent as effective as possible. So that's why channeling requests for information through the superintendent made sense from our conversation with John and Dorothy and the committee on Friday. So those are the only changes made.
Okay, thanks, Megan. So those were sort of the requests. So just so that we can open it up for discussion, I will ask for a motion to adopt the standards of practice, norms and protocols.
So moved.
Megan moved.
Second.
David, I heard you. Sorry, Emily. All right, David, second. So that'll open it up for conversation.
Just on that number five, Megan, I just reread the the one from last week. I can't find the difference and it could be that I just read so many things in the last day, but you said you changed something. I I don't see it. I don't see anything.
It was the line about no one person shall monopolize the conversation. So that was the.
Okay, I just I missed it. I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a lot of words here, Sarah.
And so how we communicate, number three, we still have in there that any communication or any request for information for town officials need to go through the superintendent. Okay, I do just want to say I'm still uncomfortable that I think we're all, you know, citizens, we're taxpayers, we're independently elected. I I know that a lot of times, you know, serving on these subcommittees, particularly budget, it was super, super helpful if I had a question on how cherry sheets worked or things like that to just be efficient, to pick up the phone and ask my question on on that. I I am very concerned about this idea that I will not have that freedom anymore. Also, because we've we've come so far in the last year with building that bridge between our town officials and our school committee and school officials. And I just don't want to see a siloed again. I think that one of the benefits of everything we've been through in the last two years is we've really broken down those silos and I and I and I feel like in some ways this is putting them back up. That's my take on it.
I offer my two cents there and then I'll leave it to everybody else. But I take your point, Sarah. I think where we are now with having John and Nan and, you know, a solid central administration, it's actually time for us to put some structure back in place. And I think we've got the team to do that. I think this doesn't, you know, the language in here is very specific about requests for information. So it doesn't preclude relationships with anyone else. It doesn't mean you can't pick up the phone and call, you know, whoever, Jason, Jackie, Ben, Emily, whoever you want to. It doesn't stop the relationship, but it the reason, at least my thought process on it, is John is the CEO of the school district. And it's important for him to know the types of questions and information that's being requested from both sides. And it will make him more effective if he is that point person. He might already have the answer because he's having regular meetings with staff and with town officials. And I just think from my perspective, we I want to make sure that we're setting up John to be as successful as possible and making sure that that process is efficient.
Yeah. And Sarah, I definitely think your point is well taken too, because we certainly have zero desire to ever go backwards. But I think I think it's, you know, I think it's a step in the right direction to move the trust forward also that 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 putting this language in there is not meant to construct silos. It's simply meant to sort of structure the way that we communicate and and how that communication goes. And, you know, I could easily see a situation where John doesn't know and encourages a caller. He reaches out and then encourages a call after that. You know, I haven't in my short work with John, but I haven't felt that he's, you know, limiting any contact with anyone at this point. You know, every time I've asked.
I don't want I don't want that to be implied in any way, shape or form, but I also know that John is under under constraints like every other superintendent that they've never ever seen before in history and his workload is something that he's never ever seen before in history. So if I'm looking for a piece of information that I can turn around, like I use the question about cherry sheets because that was my most recent one. If I can turn that around in literally five minutes, I just I just think, you know, what I should do in that situation is get my answer and then also simultaneously say, John, I had a question about cherry sheets. This is what my question was. This is what my answer was, just looping you in. But I think, you know, reaching out to John and asking him to hit pause on all this reopening stuff and then wait a few like, and I think a few days, he's he's a tremendous communicator. I'm just saying, you know, he has to prioritize what he's doing and that's get our schools open right now. And so it is, you know, through the Ed Reform Act, I keep going back to the budget because that's that's our biggest job for one of our biggest jobs right now. And I just worry that that we're we're actually going to be less efficient if we have to wait for that turnaround because he's under this this rock of weight from something that's never been experienced before. So it's it's a it continues to be a sticking point for me. It's a small sticking point. I agree that at all times you should know what questions are being asked, but I it's it's a sticky point for me.
So I tend to think too that if, you know, the that that I can understand that and everything. And if if this gets to be too burdensome, I think, you know, at the bottom of it, all of our signatures are there. And any one of us can bring it back up and to say, you know, I've I've had a few questions and it's taken too long, you know, I'm wondering if we can revisit this. Obviously, you know, at least for this current committee, we're all going to remember this conversation. And so I think it would, you know, it wouldn't be the most difficult thing to revisit in the future, kind of in an attempt to to sort of get back to the state protocols that are recommended from MAS C.
I think that's a great point, Sarah. I know I said I wouldn't say anything else, but there is, you know, we've got those pieces in here about, you know, what happens when things go wrong and making sure that we're reviewing these for, you know, from a from a committee perspective too. So.
Yeah.
Yep.
You brought up a really good point, Sarah, when you talked about the MAS C thing. I am concerned that we went from the MAS C protocols and we literally doubled them. I I wonder if we're, you know, we're making things harder than than we need to be and we need to kind of refocus on the big issue at here. And it's getting kids back in.
I think Sarah's frozen a little.
I mean, I'm a little disturbed. This is our third meeting that we talked about this. And, you know, the the biggest thing I need to do is how can we be setting up and so I have.
David, did you have something?
I just I just wanted to say, you know, as an example, I mean, these are these are not about building relationships because we all build relationships throughout our tenure on various committees and we'll be talking with people on the phone and seeing people at meetings and the like. But I, you know, I could see something like, you know, let's say we wanted an update on enrollment. And whoever is responsible for that at the district office at Woodger Road, you know, you know, John, can I get an update on enrollment from Nan or and I can see that email just being forwarded off the way technology goes and John could say, could you please reply to David's email? And that's it. And I don't really see it being anything, anything more than that. And like we say, we're just, we're just keeping keeping John informed and I think I think it's appropriate. And then and then if you if you actually are on a committee or a subcommittee or a working group, I'm sure those lines of communication will will change. You know, much like, you know, we're on the building committee and Michelle Crest is on the building committee and Jason Silva is on the building committee. And, you know, Dr. Bucky's on the building committee and Jackie Belfecker is on the building committee. Well, we're a committee, so the committee is all going to talk to each other. So I think I think they'll probably be far and few between these times when it's going to be really challenging, I think, to get the information that we need. But I think it's I think it's a good, I think it's a good protocol to have and we should move forward with it.
And also to your point, David, about how the, you know, if if you've got a question about enrollment, you know, it might be a question and you funnel it to John and then John funnels it to the rest of us. And I think that's really important too, that, you know, I think if we've got a question about the budget, it would be good for all of us to be able to hear that instead of just sort of the the one way channel if we're each individually picking up the phone.
Yeah.
Emily?
Just real quick. So as I helped Megan put these together or help edit it. And since I'm new to this whole thing, I was researching other districts' protocols. And the one that we have, there's many other districts that have exactly the same list of protocols. So this is nothing new. And so I think it's good that we kind to know that it's not something that we like put together just for us, like everybody's kind of doing, using the same. I guess like a template of how they work together. So just my little bit of research.
Yeah, that is good to know.
Cut out and froze before when I was saying one of my concerns was we took the MAS C protocols and we doubled them.
Well, I found these on the MSC website also. I don't know if there's like updated protocols, but this document is also from 2012, 2013. They use this document. So.
That's good to know. All right. So we do have a motion has been moved and seconded. I will call for roll call vote at this point. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
And Sarah Fox?
No, and it's simply that language that I, I thought it was a sticking point.
All right. So the motion passes at four to one. Okay, so I am going to attempt to share my screen briefly, because that moves us on to the website update. Um, let's see. Sorry. I might not be able to share it. Um, hold on. Here we go. So last Friday at our school committee retreat, we also went through, um, we presented the idea for a new website that is specifically the school committee's website. Um, there was a few questions that were asked that, um, I've got some answers to. But I also thought it would, might be beneficial to, to pull up the different screenshots that were taken um, and fill in the community a little bit, uh, as this is kind of an exciting piece for us. So, um, just to set the table again, it was Kate Thompson, who she had reached out originally in an email to the committee regarding, um, some ideas for, uh, communication. And Megan and I kind of took her up on her offer to fill us in on how she's seen things being done quite effectively. Uh, so she created a mock-up for a possible website. And these are just a few screenshots of the current mock-up, um, that we can, that we will go back and, um, and fix up and, and put more into, um, you know, there's bio pages, there's a calendar. And I think the calendar is, um, sort of where one of the, the main question came in to follow up on. Uh, the calendar can be a place for us to be able to highlight all of our meetings. Um, so that there are fewer questions as to when subcommittees are meeting and when our regular meetings or when our off-schedule meetings are occurring. Because there can always be updates done to this. And then it's a kind of a one-stop shop as to, um, anyone from the community wanting to know, not just from the town website, but from the school website of sort of, at a glance, what, what our upcoming meetings are going to be. Uh, so the question that I posed back to Kate, uh, from last Friday's meeting was a great suggestion from, I think it was Megan regarding the possibility of push notifications. So if, when we get this up, that somebody has a question or somebody wants information about the, the calendar and when things are posted, that, um, although Kate said that she doesn't have a lot of experience with push notifications, she did think that that would be something that could happen. Her only caution to it, and I thought it was a really astute caution, was that this is probably going to be something that this calendar that we can, um, sort of underneath it play with quite a bit. So on it, you know, you'll see meeting one, one test. So that's there. So then you can click into that. And, and when we amend an, uh, an agenda, um, specifically, we can do that. If we were to add an additional link to say a live Zoom, we could do that. Um, these types of things, if, if and when a subcommittee gets added, that all of those things would end up probably getting caught in push notifications. So that the, the cautionary piece that she said was to just be really mindful if we end up going down that road, that we don't want to inundate people's inboxes every time we've sort of added a small tweak to something that is embedded within that agenda or, um, you know, another piece to that. Uh, so I will just kind of continue to take it, take it down to sort of what could be on this. Um, and I think, you know, the, the other good piece that we had discussed last week was that this website could be put onto the school's main website so that we, so that there could be a hot link right to it. And then we can much more easily, because the school's website can be a bit cumbersome, can much more easily put up links to our policies, anything that might have just been done as we look to live stream meetings going forward, since we're going to, you know, be in this quasi-hybrid remote fashion for some time, that we could live stream our meetings to this site, that we could, um, embed them on there then so that people who missed them could go back and, and watch them. Um, and that we could, um, what was I, I just lost my train of thought, sorry. Um, that it would, so that any of the minutes that were, that were approved would be much more easily posted um, to this website, so that all of the information that we're sharing can kind of just be put up there and sourced a lot more immediately. Um, so that's just the updates I wanted to give. Um, anybody?
Can I ask one question on that? By the way, that, that site is very impressive. Thank, thank you, Kate, and thank you to you and Megan for facilitating that with her. Um, on the calendar, is there a way to, would there be a way to, um, for a person to sign up for push notifications just for certain things, like just for, um, if the financial meetings or just for general school committee meetings? And I don't know, I have no idea what tech.
Yeah, I don't know either. That was sort of in the back of my head as we kind of went through this a little bit more, that that would certainly be something to tease out, because I think that then would make it significantly more valuable to be able to do that. Um, and, and with, with significantly lowering the risk of, of flooding people's inboxes.
I also think where John started the Twitter campaign, that, that's very communicative too. So I think that that also kind of will be a, a double way to ensure if he says, you know, we have a school committee meeting coming up on Tuesday or whatever it is, that, that also will give another layer of transparency to the community of when these things are happening.
Yeah, absolutely. Megan?
So total props to Kate, she's amazing. Um, so I definitely think she gets all the credit here for this website. But one of the things, I guess my question is, what is our next step? Like, if we want this to go live, is there a way that we can just kind of set a target date? And, you know, I'm not saying we're going to be beholden to it, but if we can set a target date and some specific steps we need to take to get there. So for example, um, you know, on that mock-up, obviously, we've got some pictures that probably none of us want out there. So, you know, getting proper pictures and bios for each one of us, like that would be our responsibility to do. So if we can kind of outline, or, you know, maybe Kate can help us kind of figure out what those next steps are and what a target live date is. And then once it goes live, we can start playing with those push notifications before we, you know, roll it out to everybody. But at least the information is up and running.
Yeah, no, I absolutely think you're right. Um, and, um, you know, my, I'm slightly hesitant to pick a date, um, just because we've got so much going on. But I certainly have a hope that this fall, we'll be able to roll it out. I think the sooner the better. Um, you know, I really liked, I think it was John who said that, you know, if you're not controlling the information, then someone else is controlling the information. And I think that this would be a great way to kind of get us back in charge of, of being able to get the information out there that we know to be important and that we want to communicate effectively to the community. Um, particularly as, you know, hopefully our, our re-entry thing slows a bit and that normal business picks back up a little bit more. Um, so I, I certainly would like to see it as quick as possible and, and this, this fall, generally speaking. You know, if anybody wants to, uh, toss out a date, that's okay with me, but my thoughts.
Well, I wonder if maybe for the next meeting, if we can work with Kate, and I'm happy to do this, because I know you've got a lot on your plate, or anyone really. But if with Kate, we can work out kind of what we need to do to get it to a place where it's ready to go live. And then we can start, you know, in our next meeting, we can talk about those, farm those out, and maybe a date might become more clear. Or at least, you know, let's try to get it up and running for October, you know, a broad date.
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. And actually, I was going to suggest that this goes as an additional superintendent's advisory, um, so that the work doesn't kind of just get tossed out there to say, like, okay, we're going to work on this and, and this person maybe is the point person. Uh, but then, you know, assigning a point so that then when we have our meetings, there can be, um, updates given on it and, and information shared and, um, you know, screenshots taken again and so that it sort of rolls out in a more organized fashion.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And also this will give us an opportunity if we're able to roll out those office hours. Like I know several of us have wanted to really implement, to put those up on the calendar too. So it will, it will give a lot of more, a lot more touch points for the community, I think, which is exciting.
Yeah.
If, if you want me to, a secretary, to kind of follow up with this with Kate, I'm happy to. But if Megan wants to, that's absolutely fine as well.
Okay, um, I think, when I was thinking about it, I was going to put Megan on it just be since this has kind of been her campaign slogan this whole time. But I do think, um, you know, I think after it gets up and running, it, we should discuss that again. Um, as to kind of who is in charge of this moving forward and that it probably makes sense to have it delegated to a title rather than a person so that when committees change, it doesn't kind of get lost in translation at any point.
Works for me.
Um, anybody else, any other, any other questions that I missed that I'm forgetting to update? All right, so that will move us on to the subcommittee and liaisons discussion. Um, so we've all had the, the documents that, um, we, that I worked on with Lisa to kind of streamline things a little bit. And, um, I did sort of pull things out in a little bit different fashion. So, um, I am going to make some suggestions, um, based on some conversations that people have had with me offline of interest in different things that they would like to be on this year. Um, so one of the subcommittees that we've added is the collective bargaining, because this is a collective bargaining year. So we did need to add that one. Um, and then as stated with Bill from last year, we took the health and wellness subcommittee out from the subcommittee and, and put it where it belongs as the superintendent's advisory. Um, I think, I don't have one of my old sheets. I think that was, was what we did. Um, that, that, that was the big switches there. Um, the, so the budget, I was, was going to say that Megan be the chair of the budget. And then David had requested to be a part of the budget subcommittee this year. Um, collective bargaining, um, myself as the chair and Megan as the vice chair would take over on that. For facilities, um, Sarah Fox as the chair and Emily as the, um, other person. And then for policy, myself as the chair and Emily as the second.
Um, I would like to, to, um, be on the budget. I felt I was an enormous asset to it last year, um, as we came into closing the books. And we talked about our surplus and what to do with it. It was actually my idea to, to facilitate, um, prepaying, because that would give us that money a year in advance. And, um, and that was, that was a suggestion that was welcomed and applauded by our town administrator. Um, that gave our town money to use right now versus later on. Um, when the initial, the initial suggestion, I think, that came out, um, was, you know, to, to hand it back. Um, I have, you know, I, I have a tremendous understanding of our budget. Um, as you and Megan know firsthand, I tutored you and explained to the budget to both of you in great depth, um, during the budget crisis. Um, I feel very, very strongly that I want to be on this committee, um, and I do not want to yield that seat.
So I think, you know, you're absolutely right, Sarah. Um, I don't think it's a reflection on anything having to do with your capabilities. Um, I think, you know, David had expressed an interest, um, and Megan had as well. Um, so I, that was sort of the thinking around that.
Okay, I, I actually was unaware that we were supposed to send you our interest in anything. I apologize for that, I would have gotten that right off to you. Um, but that being said, now that it's on the table, I, I feel very, very strongly about this.
I think, um, again, I think Sarah, you're absolutely right, like you were, um, you know, you were definitely um, a key player for the previous year. I think going into this year and planning for hopefully a potential override. Um, you know, I just, I guess my two cents on it is that both David and I have a financial background. And David obviously has the experience with FinCom. Um, and I just think like switching it up a little bit might be, um, you know, I would support that too.
Um, I, I don't want to get into a discussion that, you know, offends anybody, but, um, I, I have a very strong grasp of the finance of, you know, our, our school committee of our town. Um, I, you know, was, I got, I got a chance to, um, call John and call Michelle and, and because I was so, on top of the fact that we were going to get that $680,000. Um, I, 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 I see absolutely no logical reason whatsoever why I would be pulled off of this committee in any way, shape and form. It feels very personalized to me, which is uncomfortable at best and, um, troubling. I, 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 I see absolutely no reason I would be pulled off this committee whatsoever. This seems very politically motivated to me, very.
Well, I'm sorry if it feels politically motivated. David?
And, and I'll just say, having been on, um, you know, school committee for, um, five years, I don't know, going on six years now, we do often rotate committee members from, from various committees across the board and, um, you know, people don't, and we change, you know, chair and vice chair and the like and, and different things like that. So I think it's just sort of consistent with a, with a normal rotation. And I, I welcome the opportunity to, uh, participate in the budget this year. Um, I, I did work on the committee that, that brought on Michelle Cresta as our finance manager. Um, also worked very closely with, uh, Bill McCalliffe as our interim superintendent as he was, um, trying to, uh, right the ship when he came on board. And, um, I, I, I do think 11 years on the finance committee gives me a little bit of an opportunity to, to help us, um, wade through some of these waters going forward. And as we look to get the amount of money and funding that, that we need for our budget. So, you know, I welcome the opportunity. I, I know I'm also, uh, chair of the building committee, but I feel, uh, very confident that I have the time uh, to commit to anything related to working with the budget this year. So I appreciate the, uh, recommendation to be on the budget committee.
Megan, would you consider yielding your seat? I mean, David makes some very good points about his history on FinCom. Um, I've, you know, followed this budget long before I was on the school committee, which is what really put me in a great position to explain it to you two years ago. Um, and I, I just, I, I see no earthly reason, I'll be honest, no earthly reason why I was the one that was chosen to be pulled off this. I see there's a lot of logic for David to come on it, but I see absolutely no earthly reason, other than political motivation.
You know, Sarah, I completely appreciate your request. I think in this case, this is the one, um, you know, that from my very early days on the committee, I have dug into incredibly deeply. And, you know, I understand every single thing about this budget because of what, you know, we had to go through as a committee that first year. Um, not to mention that I also have a significant background in economics and finance and budgeting. So to be honest, I think I've got the, um, professional experience to back it up as well. And I, like David, really do look forward to seeing this through this year.
I, I think it's also important to note here that, that this is the subcommittee. Not, you know, the budget is still in all of our hands. And as it comes back, you know, in the conversations in the spring, that, I mean, that, that's a full committee piece.
Good, that, I think that's a really good point, Sarah. I mean, we will, we will be working collectively as a committee and, and this is, um, you know, this, this is a subcommittee. And, um, something of magnitude that we're, we're trying to work on, um, things that will be impacted through COVID. All of those kinds of things are going to certainly always involve the, the entire committee. That's a great point. And we are, you know, we're just conduits to bring that information back to, uh, other members. Everybody is even collective bargaining as you go forward. Collective bargaining will be, will be a decision of the, of the committee. And, um, it was, um, you know, the, the choice that led us to Dr., Dr. Bucky was, was a committee that, that made recommendations that came back to the full committee. So all of these circle back to the full committee. That's a great point.
There is little doubt in my mind, as I'm sure in many people's mind right now, that this decision was made outside of a public meeting, was deliberated on by, by multiple parties. And I am, I am beyond troubled with the lack of transparency, the lack of collaboration, the lack of all the trigger words everyone uses in a campaign of how this decision was made. And I'm, I'm just, I don't think this is in the best interest of our schools in, or our school committee in establishing any of this.
And I, and I, you know, it's, it's really bothersome to me that you're gonna lob in bombs at this point. Like, this is just ridiculous. These are two people who expressed interest to me and reached out, picked up the phone and talked to me. And that's it. And so they, you know, and I had zero reason whatsoever to think that they were in, in, in unable to handle being on the subcommittee to present things to the full committee. That simple.
Yeah, there's, there's been no violation of open meeting laws here. There's, there's nothing, nothing that's been going on behind scenes. I, I simply, uh, did exactly that, expressed an interest as we knew. Every year we go through this process to, uh, appoint committee members and I expressed an interest in it. I'd like to make a motion that we-
So moving on, um, the, the other one that would require a vote, um, is the joint school-town committee representation. So, um, the building committee has kind of always sat as a subcommittee, but I actually find it, um, not the most appropriate place to be sitting as a subcommittee. Because the building committee, as it, as it comes down from the school, as a school building project, you know, we do, as the school committee, manage quite a bit on of, of sort of how, who, who makes up that committee. We obviously sign off on some things, but technically, um, building committees usually sit at the board of selectmen level. So we've kind of found ourselves, um, with a little bit of, of, um, difficulty at times figuring out who actually has the final say. So I feel that the building committee and then the selectmen MOU committee, which I couldn't come up with a better name for that, um, would, would really be more appropriate as being termed joint school-town committee represent, representatives, since that work is done that way. So, um, for the selectmen MOU, um, I think it makes a lot of sense for the chair of the school committee and then the chair of the budget subcommittee to do that. And then the building committee, you know, I think can, can stay as it was. I just simply wanted to really pull it, um, to delineate it a little bit from being solely under the school committee and kind of, um, represent it more appropriately. If anyone has problems with that, um, we can absolutely discuss it and, and push it back under a subcommittee if that feels best to everybody else.
I think these two, Sarah, I think the way you've broken them out actually does make sense because they are very different and they aren't just purely school committee business, really. They, you know, we do have to work jointly with the town. So I think that, that delineation makes sense to me.
Yeah, and, and I'd just like to add, I, I think the, um, MOU that was actually voted on at town meeting provides some significant opportunities. And it's going to be a, a really important, uh, committee to be working with the town finance department, town department heads. And COVID has sidetracked us a little bit here, but, you know, you know, we, we've talked about multiple opportunities where we think there could be some efficiencies. And we might like, like for instance, I'll, you know, technology. The schools are all about technology. The town certainly has a webpage, but we are the group that has the heaviest, um, use of technology. So maybe we can lend some expertise to the town in technology and there's an opportunity there. Once we, we get going, I think, I think this committee is gonna be critical. And I think there's, there's some real opportunities to, you know, to change the, the way we do business in Marblehead and, um, present some opportunities to the town that could really be cost savings, provide better services and, and be more efficient. So really important committee for sure.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so I've made, as chair, I've made recommendations. So I would like to ask for a motion to accept the recommendations for the subcommittee representatives on budget, collective bargaining, facilities, committee and policy, and the joint committees, uh, joint school-town committees of the building committee and the selectmen MOU committee.
Who was appointed to policy?
Uh, policy is me and Emily.
So moved on the motion.
I'm. Okay, so I have lots of committees than anybody. I was taken off of multiple committees.
Well, we haven't gotten to the superintendent's advisories and stuff too. So, but these are the ones that require a vote. So Megan moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
David's second. All right, any further discussion?
I just, I just make one more plea to please reconsider the, the budget and all of the multitude of positive savings I have brought to the table in the last year. I, I was the only one that was concerned at the budget hearing that we were losing kindergarten tuition and needed to plan accordingly. I just, I, this, I see no data points to track why I would be taken off this committee. I have been nothing but an asset to it. And again, feel very adamant, this is politically motivated and nothing else.
Um, I, you know, I don't know how many other ways to say it. It's not politically motivated. It is simply just the delineations for this year. You know, it's not at all a reflection on your knowledge or anyone else's lack of knowledge. You know, we, we all bring quite a few different assets to the table here. All right, so I will do a roll call vote. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
No.
Motion carries four to one. All right, so for the superintendent's advisories, which do not need a vote, um, as well as liaisons. And I know John had a little bit of things to say about liaisons. So I'll start with the superintendent's advisories. So we always have the safety advisory, um, and I put Sarah Fox on that. We have health and wellness and I took that one. And then the reopening committee is technically still a superintendent's advisory. So since I sit on the oversight, I put myself in on that. And then the communications one that I had just talked about underneath the website, that would last for a little while and then be turned over to, I think, most, I think it does make more sense to lie, lie with the secretary long-term. But for the advisory and getting the website sort of hammered out, um, it would be Megan.
Sweet. Did I miss, I, we, we already, we, you approved, um, I was also pulled off of all the joint town school committees. So anything affiliated with me in the town, I've been pulled off of?
You're still on the building.
Okay, but I'm no longer MOU.
No, so I said that it makes a lot of sense to have the chair of the budget and then the chair of the school committee. Are you okay doing safety?
We never met once last year, so I don't know what entails.
Yeah, I, I was on that one my first year and it never met. So, um, I mean, but I assume that it's a, it seems to be a standing advisory. So it seems like it should stay. John, you, you agree with that?
Yes, I, I think, uh, in the times we find ourselves, the safety committee takes on a significantly more important role. And it's not unheard of, uh, in my prior district, we had a safety committee and that would ebb and flow and meet regularly, uh, in some years and less regularly in other years. But I see the current year, uh, the safety committee being a pretty pivotal committee for the work that'll need to be done.
Okay. All right, and then, so we always have had, um, school committee liaisons to the school advisory councils. So for each school, and last year it was a little bit wonky because we have some students that sort of usually were in a one school, where it transitioned into another school. So it got a little bit difficult to tease out as to kind of whether or not it was representing, um, students or whether it was representing schools and what that meant. But I think it still was pulled off just fine. John, I will yield to you to have, to, to let you talk about your experience with school advisory councils.
Yeah, and I hope that I articulate this well because it's not that I don't want school committee to be involved, but it is new to me to see school committee members assigned or, um, given a role in student advisor, or, uh, school advisory councils or school councils. In ed reform, they were deliberate to create these for more site-based management reasons. And they were purposeful in saying that if you had X number of teachers, you needed to have X number of parents so that there was parity in voice. And parents didn't feel like the teachers made all the decisions and teachers didn't feel like parents made. So there had to be balance. And so coming here and finding out that school committee members were a member of school advisory councils, um, seems to me to tip that balance. And so talking to building leaders, I know that that has been a conversation before. And I want to tread very lightly here because I don't want the community to think that, you know, I'm pulling school committee members out of, uh, site-based decision work. But it's new to me. And I think as much, uh, as many committees as school committee has and subgroups and that, that this might be, uh, an area that they could step, uh, away. But again, I want to be very careful in the public perception of that, that I'm not trying to silence school committee voice. It's just I've not seen, uh, in my experience, either in my last district or the prior district of school committee members participating on these councils.
Megan, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, so I guess, um, I don't disagree with what you're saying, John. I will say, of all the meetings I go to, the SAC is my favorite. I'm on the, you know, I've been on the village SAC for the past two years. And I'm probably not adding a lot of value, so I take your point. But it's a window in for me to see all the great things that are going on in that school and to hear the teachers and parents alike talking so passionately about it. So I don't get, you know, like, as a school committee member, I don't get that opportunity that much. So I guess my only question would be, you know, if we can, not in this meeting, but maybe as we kind of move forward, figure out how we can still capture that.
Yeah, I think that, that's an important consideration. I would just, um, point to you're coming in with the school committee hat on. And so your participation in the meeting, as much as you want to be Megan the mom or Megan the involved citizen, you're still the school committee. And so parents on that council might think that they have a leverage point or teachers that a school committee member is participating. And again, it's six and one half a dozen. I could argue both sides of this and I don't want to unfairly pull Nan in, but I see her sitting. I don't know that her experience, uh, has seen school committee members on school councils either.
Yeah, and I agree. Sorry, Nan, just before you get there. I completely agree, John. Sometimes I feel that way too in those meetings and I would, you know. So I think your point is, you know, completely valid and I, and I take it totally. So sorry, Nan, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, I was just going to say I have never, I, I've been in three different districts and have never seen that.
So I think if we all hit a dollar for the number of times we've heard, I've never seen things done the way they are in Marblehead, would actually be funded instead of defunding necessary positions. But, um, I think that one, I, I have been on a school advisory council for, this would be my sixth year. And a large part of that was as a community parent representative. And I have to say, from that perspective, it was so wonderful to have a school committee member on there. You really felt that the school committee was really vested in our individual schools. And it felt, they felt more approachable, it felt. Uh, and there was never a time where they crossed the line. In fact, when we were doing school improvement plan, um, the rep at the time, um, we would recuse herself from that because she would be voting to approve it later on. But it was just, it really felt at the time to be the most collaborative, collaborative element. Um, and I think in some ways it really echoes the atmosphere on these teaching and learning committees, where it's very rare that you get to see school committee administrators, teachers and parents working collaboratively to a common goal together. And, um, I think that through the mechanisms that we have in place in our, our SACs right now, that it's, it's been, um, a, as a parent, it was very reassuring to see that school committee member there and to see that, um, deep interest.
Yeah, and I think, um, you know, obviously John talked with me about this, um, before our meeting last Friday. So I've had a while to sort of mull it over in my head. Um, and I, I haven't been able to come up with, like, strong feelings in either direction as well. You know, I, I sat on the high schools last year and it was a really interesting window in. And then there were a couple of points where we would be working on something and you would have to, you know, state your role on this committee. And then it was very clear as to whose thoughts were as the school committee thoughts. So, uh, you know, I, I, I can see it both ways. So, um, you know, and I still, I don't know, I don't know how I feel, um, at this point tonight.
I think that's fair. I mean, as I said, I could argue either side of this and this, uh, to me is not, uh, a significant issue. It, I am, uh, it's new for me. I appreciate Sarah's point that if you had a dollar for every time I said it was unique to Marblehead, uh, we could fund the budget. But it does give you, uh, an opportunity to focus attention on perhaps other things that you are interested in doing, i.e. the office hours, uh, that were discussed. And I would like to engage school committee members in being in buildings and being part of the life of the school, perhaps in different ways other than school advisory councils. But at the end of the day, um, it is not a significant issue for me.
Yep.
Yep. Go ahead, David.
John, I really, I really appreciate that last point. If there's a way to, um, now that my son is out of the school system, last year or two, I felt a little bit removed from it because as a, as a parent, you're not in the schools. But I think, um, if there's an opportunity, certainly we could, we can go to athletic events or extracurricular activities and, and things like that that are taking place at the schools. But I think that would be, that would be a, a new opportunity. And I'd be real interested to see how you might, um, how you might work that where committee members could have an opportunity to, um, you know, just, just be in schools. You know, see, see what's happening in the schools. But I, I too am just, at, at this point tonight, I'm not really sure since we've, I guess it's been a past practice. I don't know how far back this practice goes. I don't know if we can table it. I'm not really sure about just doing away with it right now. And I don't know that, um, you know, John's right, we can focus, we can focus on, we can focus on other things. I mean, we're- I mean, we're all of the the previous committees that that were mentioned. You know, the building committee that that is happening, you know, collective bargaining. We have our you know, facilities, we, you know, we want to develop a master plan on what we want to do with our facilities over the next five to 10 years and things like that. But also, I think I think these committees do report out on a regular basis, at least they have in the past. They've been part of our agenda as well. So, yeah, I I too, I think I need, I think we need a little more information or I need a little more information before we just sort of brush it, put them, put them to the side and even, you know, before we just move forward. But it, but it does seem like it's the direction that we that we could could move in.
So, yeah, sorry, I just wonder if maybe it might be an easier conversation if we had a more solid plan around how that engagement would look. Not that you're not doing enough planning, as is John, but, you know, it doesn't, and it does not something that has to happen immediately. But I think maybe if we had a little bit better understanding of what the structure would be for us to remain engaged at the building levels, that might kind of, that might be a good trade-off is the wrong word, but it's the only thing I can think of at quarter past nine.
Yeah, so what I'm wondering right now is that, given we're, we kind of find ourselves in this little odd place where we're starting school a little bit later, I think, you know, these SACs probably aren't going to be the top things on principals' mind getting the school year going. I wonder if if John and I, or, you know, it doesn't have to be me, but whoever wants to meet with John and discuss what might the other options be? And then sort of right around the beginning of school, bring it back to the committee and see what the other options are to to sort of take, take part in building level and understand building level pieces and be involved at that part of the community. And then see at that point, given those ideas, given what we know with the school advisory councils, you know, what what is the will of the committee to move forward?
Can I just add on to that, Sarah? I wonder if, you know, I guess I'd be interested to to get some thoughts from the building principals and building leadership on, you know, how they think our engagement would best work for for their buildings.
I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
I was gonna say the same thing, maybe ask if they like us there or not. Like if it, you know, makes people feel uncomfortable and not really say something they might say. Or I've actually never been to one, so I don't know how they work. But the more information, the better, I think, on how people feel.
So does someone want to work with John on that? Or do you guys want me to work with John on that? And then I think maybe bringing it back to the, maybe the second meeting in September.
Can I, can I nominate Emily? As our newbie?
Yeah, sure.
And
I'm happy, yeah.
And then maybe, maybe we could just check in. I mean, I I appreciate Nan's perspective. She's worked, she's has a lot of experience in different districts as well as what John said. And we understand that as well. But we could also just touch base with Dorothy too and sort of get some some guidance from MASC on, you know, what what other districts have done and and what what she's done.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
He's always a great resource.
Yeah, she is. All right, so we'll bring this back to the second, I want to clarify, to the second regularly scheduled school committee meeting in September. Because it, you know, we might need others, but that that third Thursday. We'll aim to put it on the agenda to to loop back to it. So then the other school committee liaison.
But am I the person who's going to present the information to you guys?
Yes.
So that's, that's good. Okay, we're good on that.
Did I just totally put you on the spot? Sorry.
So wait, Emily's gonna work out whether or not we're gonna have SACs with John and come back?
No, she's going to work out other options for building level community involvement for the school committee. She's going to gather other options with John and then present them at that third Thursday in September. And then the committee will decide whether we like those options or whether we want to stick with the SAC.
Or some combination of, maybe.
And I won't take it personally that not many people jumped at the opportunity to work with me on this and that Emily had to be nominated.
I would have nominated myself. I can't wait.
All right, so the other two are Metco and CPAC. And I know Megan was interested in CPAC and Emily was interested in Metco. Does that still hold?
Absolutely for me on CPAC.
We were all self-nominating outside of an open meeting because I honestly thought we were just going to talk about this in the meeting. I didn't know this was a discussion prior.
No, I mean, there's not been a discussion. It's just if you, if you feel strongly, you know, you can still voice your opinion.
Any one of us can call the chair at any point.
I don't think I've never, I don't think I've ever not returned a phone call. So is that okay? We don't have to vote on these. Are these liaisons okay?
I would definitely like to do CPAC if that's all right with everyone. I've, you know, obviously got the history with CPAC and so I would like to follow up with that. I feel like it's been long enough now and far enough removed. It's a completely different board leadership, so I would like to get back involved in that.
And I'm happy to take over the Metco.
Okay.
And Emily, on that one, I can do the, you know, help you with the introductions if you want.
Yeah, I'm actually looking forward to doing it.
All right, sounds good. And then, like I said, we'll report back and we'll make the decision on the SACs or other forms of involvement mid-September. All right, so that moves us along to policy EBCFA of face coverings. So I know usually a policy needs to be read through a few times and that before it's voted. But I did reach out to Dorothy Presser on this one. And she, she did say that she, that although that that is usually the preferred practice that in times when we need to pass something quickly, that those readings don't have to happen. So that, so we are okay to read through this tonight, debate it and pass it if we feel comfortable. So face coverings, which right off the bat, I did get some further guidance from a legal, from John Foskett today, saying that, given some of the changes that he put in yesterday, that he would advise changing the face coverings to face masks. So I will, I'll, I'll make that note and if the committee can just know that that this policy is actually going to be called face masks. So I'll read it through. The Marblehead Public School District is committed to providing a safe environment as schools reopen during the COVID-19 pandemic. According to public health experts, one of the best ways is to stop the spread of coronavirus and to keep members of our school community safe is the use of face masks. Therefore, in accordance with guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, DPH, and the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, following requirements are in place until further notice. A mask, a face mask that per DPH and CDC guidance covers the nose and mouth, fits securely and comfortably against the side of the face, is secured with ties or ear loops, allows for breathing without restriction, does not have any exhalation valve or vent, and can be laundered and machine dried without damage or change of shape. Must be worn by all individuals in school buildings, on school grounds and on school transportation, even when social distancing is observed. Exempt from this policy are individuals under the age of two. Families will be required to provide a daily face mask along with a backup face mask if possible. Face masks should be labeled with the student's name. Schools will have backup masks when needed should a face mask become soiled, broken or misplaced. Individuals may be excused from the requirement for the following list of reasons per CDC guidance. The individual has trouble breathing, is unconscious, is incapacitated or cannot remove the mask or face covering without assistance. In addition, accommodations will be made for individuals for whom wearing face masks is not possible or safe due to a medical condition, disability impact, a significant impediment to communication or other health or safety factors, for which a student may include behavioral challenges. Medical documentation acceptable to the Marblehead Public Schools is required for a requested accommodation. Any accommodations must be approved by the building principal in consultation with the school nurse or local board of health. A face shield or physical barrier is not an acceptable substitute for a mask unless it has been deemed appropriate with an official exemption as part of a modification determination. Parents may not excuse their children from the face mask requirement by signing a waiver. Additionally, face masks will not be required during mask breaks, which will only occur outdoors with a minimum of 10 feet of physical distance between individuals. All mask breaks are optional for the individual student. Students who do not want or need a mask break will not be forced to participate while eating or drinking, which ideally occur outdoors and/or with maximum physical distancing or during physical education classes, chorus or choir, singing, brass and woodman, woodwind instruments or musical theater, all of which occur while outside with a minimum of 10 feet of physical distancing between individuals. A student's mask is to be provided by the student's family. Staff members will be supplied masks. The district will supply a disposable face mask for individuals who arrive at a building or who board school transportation without one. In addition to their required characteristics per DPH and CDC guidance listed above, masks must be appropriate in compliance with the same rules as are set forth in the school dress code and student handbook. No masks containing offensive or inappropriate material will be allowed. If a student refuses to wear a mask while at school and does not have a documented reason that is consistent with this policy, the student will be sent home. Currently, mask wearing is mandated by the state of Massachusetts and the decision to dismiss a student for not wearing a mask has been approved by the Marblehead Board of Health. While we strive to educate through restorative justice principles, there will be progressive discipline for students who do not follow the mask guidelines. Violations of this policy by staff will be handled in the same manner as other violations of school committee policy or of the Marblehead Public Schools workplace rules and requirements. Visitors in violation of this policy will be denied entry to the school slash district facility. This policy will remain in place until rescinded by the school committee. Yeah, Emily.
Um, so I see that the wording was changed to a face mask, but what about if kids come with the gaiters on? You know, there's all that, the news about the gaiters and how they actually spread it more.
Right.
Is there going to be any, what are we going to do about that in regards to the policy?
So the gaiters in this policy is set forth by this policy, gaiters do not meet the DPH and CDC guidance because they aren't secured with ties or ear loops.
Oh, okay. So are we gonna communicate that with families?
Yes.
Like a lot, I feel like a lot of kids are going to show up with them on because they're the most, they're the easiest for kids. But okay, this is one.
Any other questions? All right, so can I get a motion?
Well, yeah, go ahead with the motion.
Okay.
Further discussion.
So can I get a motion to approve policy EBCFA for face masks?
So moved.
Megan moved?
Second.
Emily, second? All right, David, go ahead.
So I would just like a little bit of clarity on where it's 10, 10 feet now. I mean, it's three feet, it's six feet. Now it's 10 feet? I I just, I'm 10 feet of physical distance and then I I just, I don't, I I haven't heard 10 feet, you know, in my day job with all of the policies that we're putting forward in workspaces. You know, the workspaces are that it, you know, essentially, it's a, you know, a mask is required when, when you, when, you know, when you cannot socially distance and it, you know, if if you can like socially distance, so I guess it, so does this this po, this policy is, I'm trying to see also, the other question I had, does this a policy apply to staff and everyone who is in the school district? Or is it just students? It doesn't, doesn't say.
It's, it it applies to everyone in the school buildings. I'm going to let John address your first question because he.
Yeah, and and just like a clarifying question. So like, we know Dan Bauer has his own office. And if Dan Bauer has his office door closed or John Bucky is at Widger Road with his office closed, he doesn't need to have a mask on. Right?
So John, do you want to jump in?
Sure, I'm gonna go to David's first question about the 10 feet. That was revised guidance from DESI around mid, if not late July for specialty courses, band, chorus, that they are recommending that those are held outside and with 10-foot distancing. So in the context of this policy, I'm assuming that that's where the 10 feet came. It doesn't pertain to DESI guidance on general classroom instruction.
Right, that's correct. So that, I pulled that straight from the physical and that that's what's listed is the physical education choir, woodwind instruments, brass instruments and musical theater. And then the mask breaks, when we went to the department, the Marblehead Board of Health, Andrew Petty's direct words were that mask breaks should be done outside with extreme physical or extreme social distancing. So given that, I translated that with DESI's 10 feet because the 10 feet is without masks, that that the mask break, since, you know, obviously it's without masks, be done at a 10-foot distance as well. So those are all without, when when students are without a mask. And obviously, in the case of phys ed and any kind of choir or band, there's heavy breathing involved. And then, John, do you have thoughts on on office?
Yeah, I think that, I I think that's challenging. And I certainly get to David's point that in my office alone in Widger Road, I have not been consistently wearing a mask. But if that is the policy that we're going to adopt, that people in the context of the building, when they're inside, have to model for students that we wear masks whenever we're inside, then that's the, that's the route we're going to go.
And the challenging part for me to to sort of not push that forward is the idea that particularly in a school building and, you know, even more so than Widger Road, that particularly in a school building, there's people walking in and out of offices all day. And so I think to keep it as safe as possible, you know, that that is what we're looking to do is to keep everyone in our school buildings as safe as possible. I do think it makes the most sense that that people are masked when in the building.
I concur.
Any other questions on this?
I mean, it's very specific, so that's good. You know, it's a whole, whole new world.
That it is.
Right?
David, does it make more sense as to where that wording came from?
I I had read this prior, I had read this prior to this evening. And I guess that the 10 feet sort of slipped me by. And and once again, not that, not that what I do outside of school committee and where I work. I do outside of school committee and where I work has any implications on what policies we set, but, you know, you know, we're required to wear masks when social distancing of six feet or less is not possible. And certainly, when you leave your office to go to another location, to go to a break room, to go to the bathroom, to go to your car, to walk down a hallway, you, you, you have, you have the mask on. And we, in fact, have been encouraged to conduct outdoor meetings, because being outdoors is one of the things that the CDC and Mass Department of Health has suggested is, is certainly, you know, beneficial when you're not in a confined area, and that you can, in fact, you know, be in an outdoor setting when you're six feet apart and not need to have a mask on, but that, I mean, I mean, there's varying policies everywhere, and I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't think tonight is the time to, you know, debate six feet, ten feet, and things like that. So I'm, I, I, I think, I, I'm always the glass half-full person, so to, you know, what we've all been trying to do and what the guidance has been from Dr. Bucky is, you know, let's do this right, let's do this safely, let's, let's start the school year in the right way. So I'm hopeful that maybe as we move forward, some of these things can, can change a little bit. So it's, it seems to me it's probably appropriate to, to be cautious and, and take, take the steps here. We've, we've had a recommendation from John Foskett, you said has reviewed it, and these seem to be consistent with the guidelines within the state of Massachusetts, so I, I'm good with it.
All right, good. Deanna McMahon also reviewed it, and then like I said, there, you know, specific pieces of it were, I went back and forth with the Marblehead Board of Health as well.
Right, yeah.
So I think, you know, just to David's point, I mean, obviously policies aren't things that we want to be changing on a, you know, frequent basis, but this, the landscape is changing on a very frequent basis. So I think we just have to keep this one top of mind as, as the environment changes and the situation changes and we learn more, you know, maybe this is something we need to revisit as we, you know, kind of travel along the COVID highway.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I think, you know, the, the final line in this, in this is that this policy will remain in place until the school committee rescinds it. So it certainly is up to us.
Okay.
All right, anybody have anything else? All right, I will call roll call. Sarah Gold, yes. Emily Barron?
Yes.
David Harris?
Yes.
Megan Taylor?
Yes.
Sarah Fox?
Yes.
All right, that policy passes five to zero. Thanks, everyone. All right, David, that takes us to the building project update, and I'm sharing my screen, correct?
If, if you can, that'd be great.
Yes, I can, let me just find it on here. Just tell me when to click through slides.
So, um, the new school update, still unnamed, but we, it is known as the Albert's Gary School Project, so you can move forward to the next slide. So what I've done here is, there's a series of photos that Brian Johnson from left field captures, and they are submitted in the monthly reports to the MSBA, and those reports also go to the committee, as well as, I make sure I forward them to the school committee. But I think, you know, a picture tells the story, so rather than me talking about what's going on onsite, and everybody has been trying to sort of see what's happening inside the fences, I'd go through just a couple of quick slides here, and I want to give a, a thanks and a shout out to Cindy Schiefer, who, you know, is our lead communications person on the building committee, and, you know, Cindy was nice enough to, to put this slide deck together for us that comprises what's happened over the last month. So, first things first, utilities were installed back in, back in July, and then we started to get into what they say, that the business of pouring concrete. And we have been pouring concrete since early July, and at the end of this week, we will be effectively out of the concrete business, you know, four to seven trucks a day, and that is on schedule, in fact, it's a little bit ahead of schedule. So we will be out of the concrete business, but just a picture here of what's going on with the footings, and if you can move forward to the next slide. And so, this is a view of some of the walls, but it's, it's worth noting, so this one, you know, it's called a ho-ram in the back ledge, this is adjacent to Two Jane Road, and one of the characteristics that's come out of this after the rock has been cleared and blasted is, I think everybody will see that this is going to be very clean rock and very clean ledge along the edge of the school, and it's going to fit in very well with, with the design of the school. And in fact, some of the, some of the blasted rock that, that has been taken out of the site has been saved and is going to be used in the school project to enhance the landscaping and some of the various retaining walls. So all of the rock will be natural and on-site. Next slide. So this picture, you know, shows basically, you're, you're looking from up on where the new athletic fields will be, so from the, from the back of the school or where the original Upper Bell School was, looking down towards Baldwin, and you can see, you know, there is a pretty big retaining wall, and the picture on the right and the picture on the left is effectively what will be the gymnasium and the cafeteria. So that's, that's the wing of the gymnasium and the cafeteria that's, that's going together. Next slide. So then, we started with steel erection and just moving along at a really good pace. The, the first day, I think over seventy pieces of steel were installed. It's been a really coordinated process to get the steel on-site, to get it on-site timely. In fact, the steel is, has arrived two weeks early, and you can see that the structures that are going up there. And then, once again, the best view from the construction site is always from that upper level where the playing fields will be, and the right-hand photo shows looking back down towards where the school is being erected and the retaining wall. Next slide. And here's a picture of, of what it looks like. We can start to see the formation of the school, which is, which is really exciting. So if you were in, in the left-hand photo, you know, that's the area where there will be some of the pre-K play areas. You can see the hallway, the extended learning spaces that go down the center of the school. You know, on the, on the left side and the right side, you know, you'll have your kindergarten and first grade, the upper level, you can start to see how the formation is there for the skylights that will allow, by design, to have the natural lighting coming down into the school. So, you know, it's, it's really starting to take shape and, I don't know, the elevator pit, you know, we, the school will have a modern-day elevator, so that, that is ready to go. Next slide. And then, I think this one is just, once again, it's a great example. So as you're, if, if you were coming into town on Route 114, the left-hand picture, that's the intersection at Smith Street, and these joyce are the ones that will go over the cafeteria and the gymnasium, and the length of the tractor trailer was so large that it required a coordinated effort between Gilbain, the delivery company, and Marblehead Police. So Chief Picarello and his team and Gilbain, they put together a coordinated plan to time the delivery of the truck. So the truck actually turned onto Smith Street, and if everybody know, everybody knows that intersection, and this picture on the right, the truck actually had to back all the way up Baldwin from Smith Street to get the joyce on-site, and that this was the first delivery that took place on Tuesday, and two more of them took place, but it's just, it's a great example of just the teamwork and the, and the seamless efforts to make it, you know, not disruptive to the neighborhood. There was some disruption as far as no parking on the streets for a couple of days, but it was, it was well-planned, people were informed, there was a good communication plan, and so as we're trying to be good neighbors building this school and just getting the, the help of Marblehead Town Departments, this, this one was, was a great example of that, and there'll probably be a couple more going forward, but, and I think that might be the last slide. Oh, no, there's a couple more slides, and so then, just the steel joyce, once again, being offloaded, and you can see the superstructure of the classrooms in the first photo, and then the steel joyce being offloaded, as far as that goes. And then, the last thing that I just wanted to talk about, and I know this has come on a little bit quickly, but I appreciate Dr. Bucky turning this around and giving approval to allow Sean and Donna to communicate this to parents. So we missed a great opportunity, most projects have, you know, a groundbreaking ceremony. We weren't allowed to do that when COVID hit. And one of the other significant milestones of, of all construction projects is, you know, basically, when, when they raise the last piece of steel, or what's called the topping-off ceremony, and, you know, it, it's exciting for the, for the construction workers on-site, for the steel workers on-site. And so what we wanted to do was try and find a way to celebrate this milestone, to involve the children that will be at the school, children that maybe have graduated from the school and moved on. So Cindy Schiefer's been working with Gilbain, and so there's a picture on the left, there's actually, it will be the last piece of steel to be fit on the building, it will be painted bright white, and it will be located in a secure, safe area inside the gate off of, off of Baldwin, and what we're going to do is be, Sean and Donna will be emailing out to the, the Coffin, Gary, Evolith, Bell, parents and students, that we invite them to bring their student or child down between eight-thirty and three PM to come with a Sharpie, sign your name on it, and forever be part of the construction project since that beam will, will live in that school. And it's been thoroughly vetted through the Department of Health, and so we just, there will be appropriate signage, and people can, you know, come in, take their turn, everybody or anybody, but we really want to focus on the kids, of course, you know, and, and it's exciting for them for an opportunity to come down and get their name, you know, on the last piece of steel that will be fixed on the building. And then, the following week, what will happen is the beam will be raised the following week, probably, I think, need to check, check these dates a little bit, not to belabor this, but it would be September 2nd, I think, so I apologize for that. So next week would be the 24th through the 28th, and then sometime the week of the 31st, probably the second, third, or fourth is when the beam will be raised. Unfortunately, the Board of Health has said that people cannot gather due to social distancing and, and see that event take place, but the beam will, will be raised, and we're going to work with the Marblehead Reporter and MHTV to, you know, record, record this event and, and milestones so that it can be shared with the community. And that's the update, it's just, it's, it's going along great, we're, we're real excited, and when you drive by and, and see, it's, it's really, it's really starting to look like a school, so. And the school committee, the building committee does meet next Thursday at seven o'clock.
Great, thanks for that update, that is, that is really exciting. Megan?
David, I love the pictures, so thank you to you and Cindy for putting them together. This is like, you know, we don't really get a chance to have a, you know, detailed bird's eye view into the construction project, and it really makes it feel so much more real for us, so thank you.
Yeah, and there is, I think I might have mentioned it, but there's a really awesome drone video that Jack, Jack Attridge, excuse me, he's been doing drone videos, Jack Attridge did a video, it's about five minutes long, four weeks ago of the site, and he'll do another one, so you'll be able to see sort of the before and after, and that's, Emily made sure that, and Emily and Cindy made sure that that got posted on our website, so the drone video is posted on our website too, so people can see the progress.
Awesome, very exciting.
Emily?
I just want to say, it's so cool that I think everyone needs to go and drive by and look at the building, because I've now gone two days in a row because I had to show my son, and we saw like another big truck of steel being delivered today in the water truck, and it's really amazing to be able to see it actually coming, like alive, I guess you could say. Anyway, so everyone should go drive by.
Yep. It is, and so we should be sometime by mid-October, they'll start laying brick, and the envelope of the building will start to be closed in, so, so far, so good, adhering to all the COVID practices, and have not incurred any delays, but certainly as we go forward, we know things change, and once you get inside the building doing work, there, there could be some, some challenges that Gilbain will need to work through with that, but, you know, we're really excited that, you know, for now, the, you know, the project is, is on schedule and, and we're staying on budget, the committee will get a budget update on next Thursday as well.
Thanks, David. It's all, just, I'm, I'm really excited for the ability for kids to sign that, that beam, that's really cool.
Yep, just to make sure Ben Berman doesn't take up the whole section of the beam with, with his signature, so we're gonna have to limit his script on that, so.
He'll have to sign last, I guess. All right, that brings us to our closing business, so any new business? Sarah, did you have a commendation?
Um, yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank so much of our staff who has been working out of contract on these committees. They're donating hours and hours and hours of their time, they're doing it because they love our students, they love our schools, they care deeply, and I have just been very, very impressed with the number of staff members that have volunteered their summers that were well-deserved after a hard year, and again, they're doing all this out of contract, and, and, and I'm very appreciative.
Yeah, absolutely, Sarah.
All right, anybody else with any new business? All right, so that brings us to adjournment, and I will adjourn us at nine fifty-five PM. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.